To approve. And we are really fortunate to have Brenda Brainerd here tonight to help facilitate this what we're calling a mini retreat. So I want to just say that we're, oh, everyone on the, we have six members of the board present. We're all here on Zoom. We have Laurel O'Rourke, Alicia Hayes, Martina Shabram, Maya Rabasa, Mary Walston, and Judy Newman. And hopefully, Board Member Lefer will join us very soon. So I'm going to turn it over to Brenda. Thank you for being here, and we hope we can get through our agenda today.
I'm mute, as we always forget to do with all my presentations today. Cohoya, everyone, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I, I'm hopeful that I'm helpful. And how, if I could help, you know, I want you to let me know or to jump in. You know, if people want to say things, please feel free to, when I'm speaking at least, feel free to, to, you know, just kind of jump in and say what you're thinking as we're moving along. It's a lot harder to do this on Zoom. So with that being said, Judy, did you want me to move right into the working agreement? Whoops, you're still on, you're still on.
Sorry. I think whichever order you'd like to do it in, if you want to go the goals, we had originally thought the goals first. Well, I think we're flexible.
Sure. I guess I need to ask what the rest of you are thinking. The, the, you know, if we want to make sure we have the working agreements in order, so that we can move toward taking action on the goals, or if you want to finalize the goals first. I'm completely good with that. Is there any preference by anybody else?
I'm just, I, I'll go ahead, Mary.
Just a question. I thought we were just going to kind of review the goals. Like, we've already approved them, correct? I just, maybe I'm confused, so that's all. Just clarify what the intent was, and I, like I said, I might be confused. But thank you for the clarification in advance.
The, we are just reviewing them. We're seeing where we are on, doing an update. We're not going to re-approve them.
So Judy, why don't you go ahead and move a little bit through the goals? And then when we get to the working agreements, we can, you know, I can participate a little bit more in that because you guys have all talked among yourselves with the goals already.
Yeah, I think that will be not a long conversation. And I think doing this first would be good because Gordon, one of our board members, had some feedback on the working agreements. And I, I hope that he gets here in time to, to, you know, speak on those. That would be great. So I think in the, you all had handed out our board, board goals that we voted on and agreed on this year. And Martina and I took some time and went through them to see, and we did some notations. I think, I don't know if they came through on red. We did them in red, but they were after the goal. But where, where we think they, where we are with them. So maybe we'll just briefly go through each one and let me know if it reflects where we are. And then the other, the calendar that we sent out should have something scheduled relative to any of the goals that we have not completed yet in process. So, so the first goal is to conduct a thoughtful national search that results in hiring a permanent superintendent. That speaks for itself. We're in the middle of that one. The second one is complete a comprehensive and timely evaluation of the interim superintendent's performance. We've had our initial meeting with Superintendent Vanderkar, and we have a check-in scheduled coming right up, a mid-year check-in on the progress, both of the goals taken from the 2020 vision and the goals that she set in addition to those for herself. And then we have on the calendar penciled in time, a time to do her end of the year evaluation. Perform our fiduciary responsibilities in a timely manner by participating in the budget committee and appointing new members to vacancies. We've appointed new members. We've had our first meeting and have the schedule set to make our timeline. Number four, establish the next steps of our multi-year All Students Belong initiative, including the goals and work plan for this year. Please raise your hand if people have other things they want to ask or add with any of these. We have a work session scheduled. Sea Change has been busy doing that work. They've interviewed some of us. They've interviewed staff. They've worked closely with Larry Williams and Misael and the superintendent. So on the February 2nd, for our work session, we will get their, their work plan and recommendations at that time. Create, yes.
You, Sydney put it in the chat. You may want to let everyone know Gordon's here.
Oh, thank you. Yes. I guess I can't see. Welcome, Gordon, because he's joined us also. We just got started. We're going through the goals. Number five, and this is one that hasn't been put yet on the schedule. We want to get it on the schedule. It's create a plan for the North Eugene region that includes where YG and Kelly schools will be located and other programming and planning needs. And I know Mary Walston and Gordon Lefer are on that subgroup, so let us know. What, do you have any sense of when you'd like to put that in the schedule to give us an update? Or Superintendent Vanderkar, I, Mary?
Well, I would defer to Superintendent Vanderkar. We are having a meeting this Friday, however, so we might have more data then. But I will defer to the superintendent.
So the staffs are planning to meet together. That's how they wanted to start the process. And, you know, COVID got in the way, and they didn't really have a chance to be in person and meet. So they will be meeting here soon, and they'll be, the date will be revealed on Friday. Melissa Ebarra knows the date. So I think that we were letting them work through and let us know what they needed. And we were just going to hear the feedback once we had it. So I don't have an update for you, but as soon as we get one, we do plan on meeting on Friday.
Right. Yeah, we just, just let us know when we need a work session or board agenda item on that. Maya?
I, I know that this subcommittee predates Laurel and Mike joining the board. But I didn't quite realize that when we established this as a board goal. So I'm hoping we could take a second to let Laurel or I know Laurel and I, because I think Laurel probably cares also. Is it possible for one of us to join this subcommittee? And or how, how does one go about attending subcommittee meetings that one is not a member of that subcommittee?
Well, let's take the first thing and get maybe Mary and or, and Gordon and Superintendent Vanderkar could give an update on that committee.
Oh, I'll, I'll give my two cents first. I don't know if the superintendent wants to chime in, and I certainly want to hear from Gordon. But it's not a subcommittee. It's a work group. It's a staff work group. And we, Gordon and I are participants in that. It's primarily staff. We sit in on the discussion, and that's why they're not noticed public meetings, because they're like a staff meeting. And so I have tried to provide updates as we've had meetings at our different board, at our board meetings. We've only met once a month, and we didn't meet in December, so we haven't met since November. And I believe Gordon was absent in that, that, at that meeting. So that's some of the delay. And then, you know, with everything else going on with COVID, it hasn't moved on as quickly as we'd like to. So there really haven't been a lot of updates. So that's my perspective, and I'll go ahead and let Gordon talk, if he wants to. I shouldn't assume he does.
Thanks, Mary. Yeah, I, I have missed the last two, couple of meetings and don't, I'm not aware of like a written summary of where we're at. And I assume that because of COVID, things have been moving pretty slowly. From my point of view, it'd be, certainly be no problem to have more board members involved in it. I think that it's, you know, we've, we've talked, maybe this would be good to put on the agenda at some place, like what do we want out of this? Because at times, we've talked about this just as figuring out what is going to happen with Kelly and YG. And at other times, we've talked about it as a broader North Region visioning plan, which then would also involve more community outreach and input, like whether, you know, on whatever schedule that can happen while COVID is going on and while we're doing a superintendent search. But we'd initially talked about it in a broader vision, and I think it's still, unless the superintendent or Mary may, may have a better sense. My sense is it's still a little undefined if we're just doing the minimum thing or if we're also going to try to do something broader, which I think would really warrant more involvement.
Thank you. Laurel?
Um, yes, I, my, I don't need to be absolutely in a meeting unless that's warranted. I, I just would love to know exactly where we are and what was, has been going on. And like Gordon said, it seems that there may be not a written summary of what's happened so far, just because. And when, Mary, when you were talking, you mentioned that there was, the last meeting was November. Was there meetings all the way from August to November? Or, because I know we've had COVID, so anybody can answer that. That would be helpful. I just want to know how many meetings and how much has happened, and maybe we just need to reboot a little bit on it.
So Mary, your hand's up.
No, I said, do you want me to respond? That's why.
Yes, please do.
Or do you want me to let Maya go first?
Oh, well, you, you look like you're in the queue first.
No, I, okay. Anyway, to answer Laurel's questions, we have been meeting since last, I want to say March, on a monthly basis. And first, it was a, a board member, Tori, and then when his term was up, actually before his term was up, when I was board chair, I asked Gordon to join us because I knew he had a keen interest in what was going on at Kelly. From my perspective, the, the grand hope was that it was going to be a larger, you know, region look. I was just going to agree with, with what Gordon said, a larger region look about what would, what would North look like once the new North is built, really trying to make that an anchor, a star attraction, looking at our programming from K through 12 with the two feeder elementaries and the feeder, well, actually the two feeder middle schools. I'm primarily thinking of El Camille del Rio and Howard. So how do we program there to program at Kelly to make sure that kids can continue with that articulation, especially with the language programs at North? And so that was kind of what we wanted to do. There was quite an interest from the YG community to have some type of separate facility. So we've been, you know, working with that. They are co-house now with Kelly, and the COVID changed the, that whole trajectory quite a bit. So, so it is in a state of flux. We have been meeting since August. And I remember when we had this discussion at the board meeting, my desire was that we could actually say to the residents of the North Region, here is where physically your child will be in, you know, 2022, 23. That was, that was a well out of what I heard. So that's kind of the basic question. But I certainly would love to have a much larger vision because I feel like we owe it to the voters of the North Region who approved the bond in, you know, that the new school is halfway built. And so I want it to be, you know, a shining star in the North Region, if not in the whole district where kids actually want to go to North. I hope that answers it, and I just wanted to agree with Gordon. That was why I had originally raised my hand.
Thank you. Maya?
So I just want to come back to that question that I had about how somebody else might participate. If it's a work group and there's two people and there's a desire to not have it made into a public meeting, does that restrict a third board member from attending?
I think that's something we'd have to look into. I don't know, unless Superintendent, you have an immediate answer to that.
Do you think that the third person makes it a subcommittee, but Mary threw up her hand, so I'm making sure that, no? No, she didn't. So there's a difference.
What?
By mistake, I put my hand.
Oh, gotcha. And we're wanting this to be a work group and with the, the staff on hand. And so I would say that two is enough for now. And, and people need to feel like they can share how things are going without feeling, I would say, overwhelmed. But I would vote to keep two because we already feel the pressure of that, the, you know, the roof, all of those pieces are really a hard part right now. So we can report back and come up with more of a plan. But what we're hoping is that now that they've been in the group together since September and actually in the building, that we could get some really good feedback. However, they have yet to meet together because we gave them all those meeting times off so that they could get caught up and have some relief. And now this is their first chance. So I think Alicia had her hand up. Nope?
No. Okay. Thank you. So first of all, I'm going to change it on the goals to work group. I apologize. It does say committee, and I get, it, it should say work group. And I'm going to just say that we should probably put a report out or an update on a board meeting if either this coming board meeting or the one after. And get, look to the subcommittee to say what the scope, what has happened, and what we're looking towards. Gordon?
I was going to say something like that as well. I think it's, I think it's important, particularly if there's just going to be two of us. But to, and I know a lot of members of the board over the last couple of years have heard a lot from a lot of people in the community about different aspects of this. And it would be good for all of us to have a sense of what's going on. And at some regular basis, to be able to talk about it amongst ourselves. I don't know when that happens, but I think that'd be good. So I'll just support what you said, Judy.
Great. Thanks, Gordon. Laurel?
I, I would say that we are talking about a board goal. And I feel like, as has happened since I've been here, voices kind of being narrowed, not broadened. This is something we're all trying to work on and move forward. So I don't understand not having a third board member. It's not a quorum. I think it's, it, more voice and more information and more work on this, the better, if somebody has the time and the ability to do that. This is, since I've gotten here, I, even before I was elected, this has been something that has been almost in every, any, you know, all those things we went to, Judy, where everybody was mentioning this. So there's a reason this is a goal. I'm glad it is. And I really want to give it the importance that it deserves. Can we raise it to a committee level? I'm asking things, not knowing exactly what that means, just so you guys know that. But I do want, I, what I do see regularly from the district is, we'll just take care of it. You guys stay over there. And the reality is, it's a board goal. It may be superintendent and district goal, but it's also our goal as well. So this needs to be something we're actively working towards. And it's, it's one of our few things that is, we put forward as being really important. So I just want to put that out there.
So thank you, Laurel. I think that's, you raised some really good points, which is probably why we want to get more. For one thing, we'll start with, is putting on board agendas to get regular updates. And I'd like Gordon and Mary and Sid, Superintendent, as we know what the goals are. Are there staff goals that we, we don't want to be necessarily having more board members in? And that, than what we take from staff and how that all, you know, make some recommendations and updates to the board. That would be great. Gordon?
Sorry. I mean, just super briefly, I, I think we made this a board goal because a lot of members of the board wanted to weigh in on this. And so we just need to make sure that however it functions, that it functions, not that the decisions are going to be made in the work group or whatever we call, but that we're going to find things out and then bring things to the board for the board to be able to decide on what the big picture priorities are.
Yes, thank you. That's, we'll do that. Martina?
Yeah, I'm, well, you know, I think, Gordon, that you just summed up kind of what I would say. And the only thing that I would add there is I, I think that it's important for us to differentiate, like the, the where we have those conversations. So I think having those conversations and doing some of that work in board meeting is, with the report back from folks who had been in the work groups is important, both because that's a time and place where we can, all of us convene and discuss. But also because, you know, I really do want to reflect something that I heard Sid say, which is that, since that's a staff working group, you know, there is also, I think, something that we lose when we have too many board members in a staff working group. Because I do think that can inhibit their comfort and feeling that, you know, they can work together, right? Because of the, you know, the influence and the, the presence that we bring, letting them do that work together and really like get a chance to workshop and then have that shared out to us where we can have a conversation and then work back with them. I think that that can be a, like a productive way to balance the time and to make sure that people feel that they can speak up.
Thank you. We have Alicia and Mary, and then maybe we can move on to the next goal. Great. Alicia?
Yeah, I just want to, just, I don't know, honor, I guess, the fact that we, we don't do a lot of these groups. So it is confusing. So I think these are good questions. I'm trying to think when the last working group with staff was. It's different than a subcommittee for the board. And if we do move it to a subcommittee, because I've been very interested in this, and I'm, still got my little head from the folks from the Japanese immersion, when, you know, I guess I give it back when we actually articulate their program. So it's, it's been a passion, but I also really trust Mary and Gordon that they're on this group and that, you know, I have appreciated that Mary's used her time to keep us informed. And I also appreciate that it's kind of different than anything we've done before. So I think taking a little time to understand it is important. And if for some reason you move to three, Maya, I'm going to challenge you for that position because I want to be on it too. I think it's a, it's a, it's very important work, and I'm happy you guys are doing it. Thanks.
Mary?
Well, I think back in, I want to say maybe May or even as late as August at our board retreat. Because I remember Carrie Delft made a presentation in a timeline because we had laid out different community meetings. And again, I'm not trying to be evasive or obtuse, but we really haven't done much in terms of following that. And it's, it's nobody's fault. It's just, it's COVID and the roof and everything else that's happened. Kind of a comedy of misfortunes. And so kind of where we left it is, and this was really important, and I think we as a board agreed upon it. I know that the superintendent thought that was really important, is that each staff, you know, talk it through kind of what they thought. And that, that we had actually brought in a retired principal to facilitate that, that process too, that give the staff a really chance to, to talk about it, to understand it, to own the process before we made it public and brought in, you know, community groups. We still want to do that, but it's just taken a long, long, a lot longer than, than we had wanted to. And, you know, I, I liked to get things done yesterday. And so, but I also understand the process is really important, and I, I do want us to move it along because I think there's a loop to be closed with the voters in North Eugene. I, you know, if we, if the decision by the chair or the board is to expand the group, that's fine. I would respectfully request as being the only North Region resident on the board right now, that I continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have three more hands. Can we just say that we have Laurel, Gordon, and Maya? And maybe, because I think we all, obviously, there's a lot of interest here. It's going to come back really soon. Be done with this question after those three comments. Thanks, Laurel. Your turn.
Um, my, what I propose, along with my last comments and hearing Martina and Gordon, is that we do get a work group on this, a work, what do we call it? Work session? Ours, anyway, not other people's, but ours, on this after there's perhaps another meeting. So we can actively be giving, you know, information back to the, the group. And but we're also, they know we're working on things and taking this time because it's our goal. So that's what I propose.
Great suggestion. Good. Gordon?
I, I also think that'd be a good idea after Friday's meeting because it feels like we, we could use that kind of reset of like, okay, let's remember what we want to do here and get going again. So that's all.
Thank you. And Maya?
I just have a process question, and maybe Mary, you're the person for this, not to put you on the spot, but you have a lot of institutional knowledge. I've had a number of both staff and parents reach out to me. Would the feedback and the questions that I get, is it you or Gordon that I would send that to? Is that, is that appropriate for me to either send them to you or pass along their messaging? I just don't want to sit on it and not be responsive to the community.
I, I, I don't think I'm the keeper of all the information. I would, you know, if you want to form the, the work group, then yeah, with your board contacts, I would say send it to Gordon and myself. I also think you would certainly want to include the superintendent. Because really, at this point, it's still a lot of staff discussion and trying to work with staff. But I appreciate that, and I know that there are a lot of people that have a lot of interest in this. So yeah, I think forwarding on would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, because it is mostly staff that have reached out, so I'll just circle around and have them come to the three of you all.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm aware of that. I sat in on lots of the staff and community meetings they had. Gosh, it was like three years ago now. You know, when we were first talking about co-loading, co-locating for a temporary amount of time, pre-COVID, the two schools. So yeah, but thank you.
Really good discussion. Clearly, there's a lot of interest by the whole board in this. So we will be getting regular updates and make sure this work moves ahead with the community input and board input and guidance. So on to number six, to decide on or create an equity lens for the district and use it in all decision-making. So we did agree on trying one out that we passed. And in the, on the calendar I sent out, there is a work session scheduled at this point. We put in the schedule. And again, I want to say there's a big draft on the schedule because sometimes there, there are things that come up that are more important than others, that we have to bump things around. But our intention is to get to them all, especially with the superintendent search going on. So that's scheduled to talk about, really go a little bit deeper about how the board's going to use that. And at some point in the future, we probably would get an update from the district staff about how they are working on implementing it as well. So that's in the schedule. We have work to do on it yet. Number seven, identify and implement climate change initiatives. Begin the process of inventorying what we are doing and then making a plan.
Are we, we're talking about things as we go correctly?
Yes. Oh, sorry, Laurel. I didn't see your hand up. I looked, but then I looked down. Go ahead.
Um, I, well, then with the equity tool, I mean, that's a month away. This is on the, the, a work session. And I've seen it used sparingly and recently, like very, it was a very small paragraph that I, I would like it if we could, or if we can work with staff to make a format that that would come in, that would look similar to what the equity tool format is. It's because I, I just saw a very squished paragraph of not, not a lot of information. And I just like to, I feel like it would be helpful to staff to kind of create something and, and have, have it be used, because we've already said it's supposed to be used. It's not to wait until this work session. It's supposed to be being used right now. And I think that could be helpful because right now you just look at it and go, well, how, how do I get this information back? What does that look like? So.
So requesting when we get reports from staff to make sure we see or get information in a way that we can see that the equity tool's been used?
Yes, but it's also, in a way, because of its tool, so you can see all the different steps in it, but you can't see it necessarily when we get that information back. So I think there's a way to format it in such a way that when we get it back, it's easier for staff to use. And it's also easier for us to take in the information.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent Vanderkar, is that, what do you?
I requested a training from the county, and it's set up for Friday just due to, I don't know, schedules or. Thanks, Judy, for making sure they saw my email. So we have our first training on Friday. I'm, I can report back and find out what we learn. And I, I know that we want to make sure that we're doing it correctly. I also, we haven't been trained, so we're working on it.
So Friday is great. Thank you. We'll ask for an update and what, you know, you might have a plan for that or plan, tell, share back with us. That's great. Thank you.
So that means like, I just make sure, that means like in the next Friday memo or the next board packet, we'll hear like something about that? Is that what you were saying?
It won't be in the Friday memo because we meet on Friday. So it could be at the board meeting. I could discuss what we learned at the board meeting.
Which is February 2nd, so that's the Wednesday after Friday. So that's pretty short after. Okay. Great. Does that work for everyone? Great. Does that work for everyone? Yeah, okay. All right, moving on to number seven. With climate change, I read that already and there is a work session scheduled for that. And Mary has her hand up.
Well, this is something that I've been pushing for. So thank you for getting on the calendar. And I just wanted to say we're not going to be able to change the world, you know, in, in one work session. My thought and my, my hope is that we can at least identify uh, some type of organizational goal or north star to reduce our, our carbon footprint. You know, food, transportation and buildings are the big three energy consumers and we're a big users of all three of those. So I don't propose trying to do all three, everything at once. Maybe we pick a small piece. Maybe we focus on our food service and how we can reduce our waste there. Maybe we focus on our buses, or maybe we take a deeper look at some more buildings. I just want to, you know, kind of step down expectations, but I think it's really, really important that we take the first step and that we work with the city's climate action plan and be their partner, a more active partner. And that's what my hope and goal is. And so I will stop talking about it until we have our work session. Thank you.
Well, and Mary, when we start planning the work session at this point, there might be other board members that would be interested. We, we want to see what's happening in the district. And then from that, we might narrow in. So we might want to get more specific.
We, I, I just wanted to tell you what my goal or my hopes and dreams were because I've been the one pushing this and that's, that's, I was just trying to frame it one more time and hope that you will hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon?
That's all right. I don't need to talk about this. Thanks.
Okay. On to number eight. The concrete, create a comprehensive district-wide communication policy that emphasizes transparency with stakeholders and community. And again, in the calendar, we've scheduled this. I think it's, it's a big undertaking to, to look at, but we do have a work session on the calendar. And I think we have two comments on that, Laurel and Gordon.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I mean, communication is a, a big, I feel like one of our biggest problems right now. And it's across the board, how we're communicating out, how we're taking in communication to us and disseminating it. How, I mean, how we can talk with staff and how staff can talk to us. It seems like that is, that is verboten. So I really want this to be something that is, it's, it's concerning to me that it's happening mid-March. It went, you know, it's been something on our books for quite a while. I know there's been a few things happening. COVID. But it's, it's just one work section in mid-March is concerning to me. We have several work sessions for the evaluation for the superintendent, which we need to do, I guess. I, I, I get that, but I also think there needs to be several work sessions on the calendar for this. And it's because it's going to take a while to iron this out and talk about it. And I don't want to wait and then we have to do, we do March and then the next one's in May.
So Laurel, thank you for, for bringing that up because when I read this goal and then Gordon, I'm sorry, I'm just jumping in because I wanted to clarify what you were saying. It was about our communication, the district's communication with stakeholders and community. To your point about how we talk with each other and staff is a really important part. And I am hoping we'll get to doing some things before that. So I might, I'm just going by how we wrote it and talked about it. So I could be off on that, but that's what I was reading. Do you?
Yeah. When I proposed this, I was proposing a comprehensive communication policy. So it's going to take a time to do this and to do it well, but I think it's important that we have a policy in place. So there, there isn't, you know, what we're dealing with now. So thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify that this stuff, that kind of communication I hope will happen. That piece of the communication goal. So maybe I didn't think about it as comprehensively as you were. Gordon?
Uh, thanks. I just want to suggest that the, I think the work session would be better spent with us talking about what are places that we'd like to see improvements because we've been talking, at least in my experience, this has been a board goal every year that I've been on the board and we've had a lot of conversations. And I, I think we have a pretty good idea of how things work in the district. I'm also thinking primarily of communications with the, with the public and parents, students, staff as opposed to our internal communication. And I feel like, you know, given the limited time between now and the end of the year and all the things we're trying to get done, it might be better spent to try to have a session where we flesh out, okay, what are, what are all of our thoughts as a board? And we won't agree and we won't be able to get to do all of it. But I think that might be a better starting point than just getting a report on what's happening now in the district.
Good, very good. Thank you. That will, well, when we plan that work session, I'm making notes of that input. Thanks. Okay. Turning this over, these were just tasks and the first one is one, actually, I, about integrating the goals, activities and outcome measures, the high school success plan and student success plan and the 2020 strategic plan. And I was, I had a conversation with the superintendent actually just the other day after our budget meeting because of the thoughts about framework that we wanted to have for priorities. And somehow I think this, this particular, I know I had hoped for this. There, we would like to figure out, because if we talked about funding things that were our priorities, really being clear about what the, our priorities that have been articulated are, would be helpful. So it's, it's a way to start moving so that everyone is aware of all these plans and sort of priorities for the district. That's just one idea I had with that. Any other thoughts about that one? It's a task. Okay. Expanding student engagement and voice in the district. A new process to select student representatives on the school board and expand their partner, their participation on the board. Well, we took a baby, a step. And thank you to the subcommittee who planned to, I think it's Laurel and Martina and Alicia. And I only, we only got to come in at the end, but it looked like you did a great orientation and hopefully we'll be on a really good path to include our students on the board and also.
Judy, it was Maya too. Oh, Maya. I don't want to.
I apologize. Yeah.
No worries. No worries for me. I don't know. Maybe you pissed Maya off. Let me see. Nope, I don't think so.
I apologize. I was, I, I, yeah. I didn't write those down. So, um, anyhow, I thank you. I think we've, we've taken a step and the affinity group that are starting to meet and there are a couple of work sessions on there that I know the affinity group leaders are going to help work with us to get the students be able to present what they want to us. There could be questions we ask of them. We'll figure out how those will work, but we want a little more time to have a conversation and hear from those students. I know that's in the queue. And I think the wonderful equity committee, which I know Maya has been involved with and Alicia is appointing some students. So Maya, go for it.
My understanding is that that subcommittee was planning to meet again after we got through this immediate hurdle of onboarding the student reps and that we were going to talk about how to bring in the affinity groups. I know there was a lot of discussion on the board as to whether it would be a work session or a regular board meeting. So maybe before we commit to the work session concept, we could have a chance to meet and maybe even incorporate some of those leaders into that conversation. But I think ultimately we were hoping to have a conversation with the actual students to decide how we wanted to bring their voice into our space.
Right. Thank you. That's a really.
Into including their voice. I should have worded that.
I was only summarizing originally what Missa Allen Larry had presented. So we're holding space on the calendar if that's what you want to do. If not, this, you're right, the subcommittee is going to direct us on that. Thank you.
So it, it sounds as though Laurel, Alicia and I need to make a meeting, schedule a meeting for our next steps conversation.
Great. Thanks. Laurel?
When I look at student voice, the, the reality is, is this is one small part. I see it as being a bigger need to be to intersect with the district. You know, one thing is I wrote a letter this week, which I know you saw where I was, I, it's really concerning to me where we're asking for student voice. A message goes out to all the student body saying, you can attend this thing. That is a part of, for my son, it, half of it is in one of his class periods and the other half is that at lunchtime. So it's, it's really, we, I want us to be really aware and make it make access, act, the barriers are higher than the access. This needs to be changed. So I really want student voice to be inserted in a lot of what we're doing. When I hear about things like, when it was presented to us about the pictures in the school, which was a lovely idea, but I was like, where are the students on this? I want to hear what the students think of this. And if they're excited about that and who talked to them when this was presented? Because that's who's walking through the schools, right? And that's who it's for. But that's, that's what's missing. So I really want us to have a conversation include with this one. How we are inserting and listening to our students because they're amazing. I'm not talking about mine. Mine drives me crazy, but I love him. He's brilliant. But yeah, I'm, I'm so many of them. When we were just having this meeting with Martina and Maya and with them and their voices and we, we gave them a little tiny cue to be like, you don't just need to do simple reports to us. Tell us some things that really are, that, you know, are going on and you want to change. And they just took off with it. It was beautiful. And that's, that's what we really want to be part of this because we are about the students. We're about our educators and we're about, you know, our parents who have to deal with the whole system. But, you know, the whole reason we all exist is for, are for students. So I just hope we can talk about this as well in this subject line and this, I forget task you talked about, you said.
Yeah. No, well, it, well, because it was, we put it under task because it was happening. But great. I think if, if the subcommittee that's, that's already existing wants to like think bigger and give some plans going forward, that would be wonderful. It's a great idea. Thank you. And the last item under tasks is to create a community benefits agreement. We, we did, we, we actually did create a community benefits bidding package that we're trying out and hopefully it'll be really successful. So, great. So the other goals, I wasn't going to give an update on because it's to be announced. So. Laurel?
About CBA?
Yes.
I, when I read this, I was understanding it was to be to, to talk about, to integrate it much further into district process. Not, I know we did something, but I don't, do we have to wait for all that to be completed before we integrate it further into district process?
Gordon, did you have a comment related to that? I'm going to just.
Yeah, I think what we decide, since Camus Ridge is the only school left to be, to be built of the current round of construction, that we decided to try the thing we voted on on Camus Ridge. And then based on how that goes, to look at doing something more comprehensive in the next round of construction will be, which will be after our next construction bond that we haven't decided to do yet. So probably sometime in the next couple of years, but that's why we're not, at this point, we're not at the point of saying, let's do the comprehensive thing. I think that's everybody's interested in that, but that we're going to do that down the road. That's my understanding.
That's my understanding too. Does that answer your question, Laurel? Good. Okay. So I'm going to say, oh, go ahead, Gordon.
Sorry, I did want to raise something about the teacher morale and retention thing.
Okay.
Which is, I don't think we have the time or bandwidth to, to work on creating a metric this year, much as I would like it or to do anything systemic. But I know that we're, like, teachers are resigning every, I mean, every board meeting, we have a list of people resigning. And I would like to, to see if there could be some, at least some level of exit interviews with those people to try to get it. Again, the thing that I'm not interested in anything personal or I'm not interested in the things we can't afford, but like with an eye to trying to identify whether there are affordable things that might make a difference for the people who are resigning earlier, not, not people who are retiring. And so, you know, maybe that's something we could get a report back from the superintendent or staff at some point about, even if it's like a small, you know, not a, we can't do something comprehensive or it was too thinly stretched. But if there's some you know, initial version of that that could be done, I'd like to see that.
Thank you. So Superintendent Vanderkar, maybe in a Friday memo, you can let us know. I know, yeah, some thoughts about that. That'd be great. Okay. I'm going to say that we are working hard. And I want to thank everyone on the board for their participation. I know we are doing a lot of meetings and a lot of work. And I just want, as I say, express my appreciation and thanks. Everyone is really stepping up and doing a lot. And what a year. And I'm going to now turn this over to, to Brenda Brainard. Thank you, Brenda, for letting us go through that first. And now I think we will devote the rest of the time to what you're going to help us with.
Perfect. Thank you, Judy. I'm, I just want to say that I'm impressed with all the work sessions. I hear what you're saying about everybody wanting it to be today or yesterday or how you've expressed that. But it is, you know, it is pretty ambitious. And from someone who's, you know, been in the district a long time, we really appreciate. At least I do the hard work that goes in to making new policy as things change. This has been a really tough couple of years that nobody thought they would have to respond to. So that, that's pretty good. So with that being said, it's probably time for the board to move forward and finalize their working agreements to make sure that there is some decision about how things will be done. It's always hopeful that these can be done with a lot of buy-in, you know, and, and not make it something that's more divisive or, you know, more hard feelings about that. And as, as I've read through the working agreements and had some conversation, it seems to be that the working agreements are, you know, that everyone is fairly comfortable with the bulk of the working agreements with the exception of the communication section. And if that's correct, then we should probably spend our time and focus on seeing if we can make some resolution to those confusions and concerns and, you know, disagreements. So that when the board meets, this working agreement can be finalized at a board meeting. And that people can feel a sense of accomplishment and comfort with what's been done here. So am I correct in that there seems to be some commonality around this, all the sections other than communication? Anyone have problems with?
I think we worked through all those sections.
Right.
Yeah. So then the questions, everyone has to see the final.
Sure. Yeah. So, you know, with that, with that being said, I, I think everyone should take a moment and think about the communication section, communication by board members. You know, I have the old ones and the new ones and the proposals and the questions. But when we, when you all stop and think about communication by board members, you know, the most important thing I think to think about is what do you want at the bottom line of this? And can that be achieved in, in terms of line of authority? And can that be achieved in, you know, in terms of reality? And perhaps either, you know, I want to suggest rewrite the whole section, but think about what you want to see and what the problems are. So let's start with the first one where it said board member communication is subject to Oregon Public Meeting Laws. That's pretty we had a big session about that just a couple of months ago at the board meeting. And I don't know about you all, but it kind of scared me to death. It's like, man, I don't want to talk to anyone. And so those are pretty rigid laws as a result of a lot of things that have happened in, in places. So it says that board members should not deliberate toward, you know, any public decision in any format except in public meetings. A discussion by more than three board members in a non-public forum on any board matter is not allowed. And that conversation just came up a few minutes ago about the work session versus the work group versus the committee. And the, the thing that we have to stop and think about is it, it says more than three. So that would be four in your quorum. But what are the prob- But what are the prob- are there people that have questions or confusions or problems with this section? To begin with, I'm sorry, Laurel, yes, I see your hand up.
The only thing is that it's, it's kind of redundant. It should just say we're subject to public meetings law and we must follow them. It doesn't need to say exactly what they are because there's a whole bunch of them, but it just says one of them. We already know that we can't have. More than three people, so, and these are our agreements, not somebody else's.
And, and you know, that is, that's an important point. I think that perhaps this is just put in here as a, I don't even want to say gentle. As a forceful reminder to the board. Martina.
Yeah, I think this is, this is interesting and, and you're so right, Laurel, like the, the law is so specific and there's so much detail in there. I think though that one of the reasons why it may be useful and I'm not wedded either way, but why it may be useful to have that addition there. Is that it's, that's actually a little bit broader than what the law says. The law is really specific about deliberation towards a decision. And this is saying a discussion and we may or may not want to have that. But I, I can, I can imagine that part of the reason to have something like this in here. Has to do with perception as well as the letter of the law, right? So there's the, there's both sides of things and we're talking about perceptions. There's both, you know, whether or not. The law was followed to the letter, whether the intent, whether all of that was by the books. And then there's also how like the public perceives things. And so as a board, we've been really cautious, even more cautious. Often than what the letter of the law requires because the perception that there is a violation of public meetings law. Harms public confidence and credibility and faith in what the board does. So we've been, we've been so. So cautious and I, I think that there's, there, there can be something useful about sort of naming that. Again, whether or not this is the exact language is, I'm not, I don't feel wedded to, but I do think it's useful to bring that up.
Thank, thank you, Martina. I, I really agree with that. It's even though this is your board's working group. There are a lot of people that see that and it's that little bit of, we acknowledge what it is and, you know, will abide by this. I'm sorry, Gordon, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I don't think there's anything about public meeting laws that's controversial. I just, the second sentence here. I think potentially reads like something that I don't think anybody means, which is just that it doesn't specify about a quorum, right? Because less than four board members can deliberate about anything they want in any forum they want. It's just when, anything that's four or more, you, is strictly you cannot do and. I'm, I'm good with the word discussion in the last sentence because like trying to say what's a discussion, what's deliberations like to find grade. I just think to say, we shouldn't be talking about board business with a quorum seems right, but the, and the second one, I think that's what is meant by whoever wrote this. But I just wanted to clarify, right? We're just talking about a quorum.
Yeah, sure, and you know, you can think about, you know, we can always wordsmith things to that. That's why we all have lawyers, huh? But you know, you, it's, it is again, as Martina said, you know, a reminder that, you know, you could say, you know, board members shall be conscientious. You know, conscientious or conscious. You could say it in other ways and saying should not, board members shall be conscientious. About any conversation that could be construed as deliberation. You can put a lot of other, you know, words in there and, and it goes back to that. You know, that transparency and a, a reminder to the board members themselves. I, I, one moment, Laurel. In thinking about making it more than just citing the law. Is that sometimes when board members change or things happen, it would be a way of giving. New members to a little heads up in case they haven't yet had the training. That would come through, you know, if you get on the board and you don't have a training for three or four months. This gives you a little heads up to either find more information, ask questions or be reminded. Laurel, please.
I was going to speak to exactly what you said, so I hadn't been even on the board for a month. When there was a public records request to, because there was somebody that. Who had put four board members on a text thing. So I didn't respond to it. I wasn't part of it, but I got in the article that was written. It doesn't really matter. I wasn't part of it. The person who started it wasn't a board member and it doesn't really matter. Who starts it? They still smeared my name being like she says that she, she, and she never responded. And she says she deleted it every time, but the reality is, this is, this is our working agreements. And I think that's really important and I was thinking about, I knew the rule and I had just started a bar and I had read these. And so I deleted it every time, but it doesn't really matter. The reality is, you just need to know not to participate in anything like that. And that's part of the rule, so I can go either way. I'm not gonna sit on it forever, but I do want to say, it doesn't, it's, it's. Still, people are going to perceive us how they're going to want to perceive us because it's not just about, about this. And so I don't hold much weight on perception of public because. I've dealt with it my whole life and I, you know, it's, it is what it is.
I'm always sorry when people come into things and it's like, oh my gosh, I wasn't even here when that happened, but that really isn't a defense that anyone really looks into. Judy.
I just wanted to say that maybe a better choice of words would be a discussion by a quorum. Which is for, you know, of the board in a non-public forum on any board matters not allowed. Would that be clear if we just stated that way?
That would be very clear. You might be in a situation where someone, you know, resigns and your quorum would then change. If you had, you know, an, an open board position for one reason or another, then it wouldn't be three or more. You might be looking at. You know, two point five, which would be two. And so you might be in a situation and if you identified it as a quorum, then. That, people might even understand that more than just saying, you know, if, if other people are looking at these for perceptions. And they would say, oh, a quorum, they're gonna be doing business or they're gonna come back and vote, you know, the way they've talked about. So that might be much more clear just in the case of the changing quorum. Yeah. So are we kind of good with that section? Yeah, okay, let's move on to number two. Board members. One thing I want to say here, and it's just a matter of wordsmithing. I was always taught that we don't use the word will, W I L L. In legal documents unless we're talking about probate. So when I read this, I am immediately transferring will to shall or should. Those kinds of words, it doesn't mean you have to change them. You're all very comfortable with this. And as Laurel says, it's your working document, but I just want to let you know that if I ever say something different, that's simply my reason why. And number two, board members will communicate directly with the superintendent when relaying a concern. A complaint or problem received from a community member. Eugene four J school district staff member or another stakeholder. Any request for information, data or reports other than a simple distribution of an existing document or report. Must be made through the superintendent. Are there concerns about this section? Pretty good. Yeah, it's that, I'm just a moment, Gordon. Yeah, it's kind of that, what do you call it? Chain of command or. What we, you know, what we call our, our authorities, supervision authorities. Gordon, please.
I'm, I'm honestly not sure entirely what's meant by some of them, but by some of the language here, but I think this. I think for me, this may get to some of the more, or begin to get to some of the more underlying. Principles, which is basically, I think we need more open, if anything, more open and more robust communication between. Board members and, and everybody, staff, students and parents. I think there are some things that are clear. That are clearly not in that, like A, we don't have the power to do anything. So we're not gonna say, oh, just tell me what's going on and I'll mediate this or I'll solve this or whatever. B, we shouldn't be like calling up a principal and saying, well, tell me about what's happening in your school because I want to know blah, blah, blah. Like, I feel like. That's a, that's a relationship that is not, like there are things like that that are not ours, but to me, this is, this is. Very broad. I mean, when, whenever we have a concern, complaint or problem received from any community member. And then I don't know what it means communicate directly. Does it mean immediately? Does it mean only? Because we, we have all kinds of people talking to us and I think other than the things that are. Clearly inappropriate, which I would say is like kind of as if we're acting like we're, you know, a superintendent or assistant superintendent or a principal. Towards somebody which we shouldn't because we're not any of those things. That there shouldn't be restrictions on talking to people. If somebody says, oh, I have this, I don't know. I'm, I'm having this problem with my kid who has this particular problem and there's other people who have this problem too. I say, oh, really? Well, tell me about it. Because I don't understand that. There's no reason for me to go to, at, at that point to go to anybody else and I don't want there to be anything to. You know, to, to restrict that and honestly, I think we all get a fair amount of things of people coming to us. In confidence of things that they don't want to say publicly and they don't want to say to their supervisors and we can't act on that. You know, there's, it would be inappropriate for us to act on that, but to talk to people, basically, so, so if this means. If this means immediately or only communicate with the superintendent, then it seems wrong. If it doesn't mean that, then I don't know what it means.
You know, sometimes it's that thing where you say to people, are you wanting me to do something because I'm a school board member? Because just by being school board members, you all have lots of authority and responsibility and, you know, perceived power. Not so much real power, but perceived power. And that, you know, it's always that thing, is this something you want me to address or is it just, are you just venting? There's a huge response of how you would, you know, what you might have to do if someone is just venting versus. This is something I want you to look at as a school board member. And sometimes we do have private communications. I want to say something just kind of. Before we move on with that, with that first sentence, I understand it's confusion and concern. But I think the request for information, data, reports and distributions for a net document should be made through the superintendent. Does anyone have any problems with that line? Yeah, that, that's, that's, I think that was pretty good and pretty, that if you want. Something from the district, your line of authority or chain of authority would go through the superintendent to respond for it. We'll get into that stuff later about more than fifteen minutes and that kind of stuff, but that sets that forward. Martina.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad that you brought that up. I think I, I've, having, Judy and I having spent quite a. Quite a lot of time looking at this document. I've thought about this item a lot and I think that what may be at issue is that the two sentences are. I believe. Either intended or more functional when thought of as a if this, then that, rather than two kind of separate ideas. So in my understanding, if I'm really trying to think about like what's going on with this. I understand this is not saying like, oh, anytime a community member speaks to you, you have to immediately tell the superintendent. And more, if a community member brings up an issue, relaying that to the superintendent instead of. In your, you know, example, Gordon, calling the principal and saying, hey, I heard this was happening and then asking for a report. I think that these are meant to be connected and not discreet. And so I think that wordsmithing this a little bit so that that connection is clear might, you know, immediately sort of fix some of those problems. Because I think the implications that you're describing really are there if we're only looking at that first sentence in isolation. But if we're connecting the two, then we can see the causation that's being implied. And so that, that would be my recommendation is that we just work on make that connection a little bit clearer.
Thank you, Martina. Laurel, I'm trying to write this as you're talking. I'm trying to think in my head how we can capture what you're trying to say.
I, I just find this poorly written. I, you know, as a mother of a kid in school. This is kind of just ignoring the fact that I do need to talk to school people. I just text with them a few, like an hour ago. And so it, it doesn't allow for that and in, in the way it's written is to say this is the rule. And you're gonna sign off to say this is the rule. And so as it is written, I couldn't sign off on this. Because it is saying everything will go through Sydney and I don't really think she wants to know that my son has this one thing to get done. And, and his math class. So that it, it's just not, it's just not poorly, it's not, it's not well-written. My belief is what they're trying to say. Is if you have a specific request. As a board member, that must go through Sydney and, and it's not, you can't just go to anybody to ask for this. And start pastoring all the staff who already have jobs. We have one employee and that's who I figured that's who I'm supposed to be going to. So that's my belief of what they're trying to say. If I'm wrong, then I don't like it at all, but I think they're trying to say.
It's funny because when you were talking that I'm trying to think of how to write this and perhaps the first sentence of this section should say. When receiving, you know, a complaint or concern in the capacity of a school board member. That there are some things we need to do so that if, you know, if. You know, none of you are my, like my personal friends or my neighbors. If I'm just, you know, generally saying something. Good or bad, negative about the district, if, I'm not asking you to do anything, but if, if I. If I say, oh, you're a school board member, I have this problem and then the next thing out of your mouth should be. Is there something you want me to do about this? If you do, I can bring it to the proper authorities, give me the information. So maybe when talking about, I'm sorry, I'm pointing this to you guys and you're not even here. So you know, maybe when talking about that first sentence, you know, when receiving. A complaint or problem, I'm not even sure if concern is a, is a correct word because a lot of us have concerns that we just kind of want to comment on. And in the capacity, in the capacity of a board member, the board member. You know, from a community member, a staff. Or another stakeholder, the, I'm not sure who that is, another stakeholder. You know, shall we relate that to the superintendent? As board members, as part of your trainings that you have. When you're working on these agreements, what you should perhaps think about training yourself to say is. When someone comes to you and say, you know, the first thing you should ask is, are you telling me this as a board member or just, you know, another community member? And if, you know, if you want me to try to address it, then there's some things we need to do. Give me all the information. And I'll take it to the person who can then deal with it, the superintendent. I think Gordon was next and then Judy and then Maya. Oh, Laurel, and then Laurel? Okay, Gordon.
Yeah, I, I think there's a big category of things that's not captured by, by, by what you just laid out that you may not be thinking of. I mean, I have lots of stuff come to me. I mean, I can, I can think of lots of examples, but for instance, in the. You know, as Mary was talking a couple of years ago, there were big meetings both with staff and, and community and Kelly and YG about what was gonna happen to those schools. And I had, among other things, parents and PTO members who talked to me and said, look, this is what we're really afraid of. We want to make sure the funding doesn't. We don't lose positions, for instance, as, even if enrollment goes down. And I said, okay, explain this to me so I understand it. And then I said, I'm, I, I agree with this. I'm gonna bring it up. Basically, the things that we can do is bring something up in the board or bring something up to the superintendent. But that conversation is not, isn't say, oh, if you're telling me this, I'm just gonna hand it off to the superintendent. I'm gonna say, let me understand. I'm gonna advocate for this. I'm gonna ask for information about this, you know, any of those things. And frankly, then people sometimes come with. Like I said, things that are confidential, so I, I guess I would like to hear. To some degree, what are the things that people are worried of? Whoever wrote this, or maybe it was twenty years ago, like what is the, what is the. Danger thing that is wanting to be prevented? Because I think we might be able to say it more clearly, like we have no manager, like we should never be telling. A principal, a teacher, or somebody in the central district office, I want you to do this. And we should know that even if we don't say, if we say, I would like to know this, like that gets received as, I want you to do this, right? So all of those things are inappropriate and all, and us saying, oh, I'm gonna solve this, let me tell you how it's gonna be. Is, is inappropriate and it's false because we don't have that authority, but I think maybe we can be clear about the things that we don't want to have happen. And leave everything else open. And I guess also the, the paragraph to me kind of combines two different things, the. The request for information, which feels like it might not have anything to do with like, what do you do when somebody comes to you with a concern? So mostly, like I think I know what this means, like we shouldn't be calling up anybody on the superintendent staff or principal or teacher and say, hey, I want you to give me a report on. Blah, 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 or give me the numbers from blah, 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 but if, when people come. But um if when people come to us, which they sometimes do, and they say, look, all a bunch of us teachers who are uh, I don't know, like, all social workers, we're overwhelmed, and we have this blah, 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 and we're we're pulling things together below. I'd be interested to see that, right? So I think there's a, I think we want to be clear about what are the things that are problems, which I think we all agree on, and then leave everything else open and just be careful about overbroad language that um that restricts our ability to be intelligent by talking to parents and teachers and students.
A great comment. Thank you, Gordon. Uh Judy.
Yeah. First of all, I just want to say I support pulling out the cons- the the idea of a complaint about personnel or people or some or something that's going on from information that makes sense, but because I can see that confusion. But the way this reads to me, uh, and I I agree with everything is being said, but it never occurred to me that if someone tells me something in confidence, they don't want me to share, I'm going to share it because I wouldn't do that. But in my role as a chair or Laurel, you know, I that you that you'd have to talk to the superintendent about something with your own child that does. So I I, yes, if this communicates that in a way, we should clarify the words because that is definitely not the the intent. But I think if at least as a newer board member or even saying if I get something of concern that I really that the person is okay with me sharing, the superintendent is the person if it's something to do with a principal or a teacher or staff that can actually figure out what's going on and do something about it. You know, we can't as board members, but she can, and she's our employees, so giving her that information so she, you know, it there are things that maybe we we hear about that really shouldn't be happening or whatever, but never at the expense of a confidence with someone, you know, this would be something someone's coming to you. Hey, board member, can you do something about this? This has been a pervasive problem. So that I I think there is some distinction and maybe we can find the right words to to make that distinction.
Uh, thank you, Judy. Maya, please.
I um in the, it it feels like the the more clear we say things, the the easier it will be to um live by them. And and I just, I I noticing that both community members and four J school district staff members, that's a lot of words, and they happen to also be stakeholders. So I mean, we're saying this about all stakeholders. Doesn't it just make sense to just use the word stakeholder? Uh, and eliminate all the extra verbiage that bogs down the messaging.
That makes sense, too. Yeah. Um, I'm just trying to think, you know, like, when we say conversations that rise to the level of a complaint or, you know, um concern as a school board uh shall be directed to the superintendent rather than anyone else in the district. You know, if you, eh eh, instead of saying, you know, this is who it has to go to, and this is why it would give, it would give the board members direction of who gets it rather than someone else. Um, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think while we're thinking. Laurel, oh, I'm sorry, Maya, did you have something to add?
Just the 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 distinction that I think is missing from here is the that the the communication coming to us um that that should go to the to the superintendent um is 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 something that that they're asking for action to be made on um as opposed to like that venting in this in the aisle.
Yeah, yeah, when they're telling you things, the school board members, it's because they're usually asking you to help them. Yeah. Laurel. Oops, sorry.
Yeah, I'll figure it out someday.
Yeah, you get one of those a day.
Um, so I with this one, I I think it's almost it's there's so many different answers coming in to this and discussing about this is it has, like, when I like, we're talking about, we hear something at the school, okay, we promise to take it to through the superintendent. The reality is, and you you mentioned that we have to be aware of this, and it's like, maybe that's where the difference I can't talk. The the difference eh difference is, is we talk about being aware of to know when we are in our role as board members. So there are many, it's very obvious to me, like, I have to make sure when I write to my my kids' teachers, I make sure to put, what had to figure this out, Laurel O'Rourke, Lucian's mom. And I wanted them to know, I'm, I don't want any confusion because I realize sometimes I do. I am saying something that is necessary to say that is not happening in his IEP, and I'm strided. But I want them to know it's coming from mom.
You know, more than a board member.
I'm not a board member saying this. I'm not going to be at the next board meeting going, and this happened.
Yeah.
But it's, but it's that it's it's really important to understand that distinction because we are talking about something where if somebody felt they couldn't say something important that were, eh if they, not right now, but somebody coming on to the board, this may feel like they're they're tied to help their child or something. And that's what happens.
One of the things you guys, I think you guys should kind of think about for just a moment to step back. Uh, one is is your working agreement as board members. It's not any of yours individually. Uh, you know, all of us a step in and out of our jobs, and this is your uh full-time volunteer job for for all of our kids. And, you know, the heading of this section is communication by board members. So to me, there would be some um assumption that those are communications I'm having because of my position as a board member, not my position as a mom or a um, you know, uh, family member or something like that. And that might be a little bit of a distinction so that, you know, Laurel, you don't have to say it, this is my mom hat, this is my board hat kind of thing because we're all going to uh get information. Gordon?
Well, I just wanted to say assumptions can be very dangerous. So I just want to I want to put that out there because not everybody is making the same assumption.
Sure. No, and and that's why that whole, yeah, I don't know, you know, I don't see a, um, what do you call it? A like a mission statement or what you do in the very beginning, you know, that it sets out that it's as board members. So I think that, you know, kind of sets out that this is something that applies to board members, members of the school board. Um, I'm just trying to think of all the ways we could rewrite this that would say what I think we all know what it says. If you're a board member and you receive information, a complaint, um, you know, and we can all distinguish what's a concern and what's a vent. We should be able to do that as adults that the person with whom we direct that or to to whom we direct that. Or you could even say the office of the superintendent or to the superintendent. Um. And and even you could put comma and no one else in the district. And so I'm just trying to think how to make this wording um be very clear on um what's the difference between a conversation and a complaint and that it's not that you have to run and tattle to the superintendent or tell everything to the superintendent. But that that is to whom you speak and it, we could even just a minute, Gordon and Martina, I see your hands. You know, there might even be a statement in there where we could talk a little bit about kind of chain of command is that the board you know, in tribes, we say the council speaks by resolution. You don't listen to anyone individually. The council speaks by resolution. And so it would be kind of the thing here where as as a a school board member, you're speaking to the appropriate office, whoever, whomever the person is uh that sits in that office. Gordon.
So I think there's a a big difference between individual, like, problems of an individual and and concerns and and complaints that come to us that are bigger and that ultimately have to do with policy or budget decisions. So if somebody comes to me and says there's some particular thing that's happening to their kid or something like that, then really the only thing I can do and the only thing I ever have done is communicate with the superintendent. And maybe I say, hey, this sounds like a like a serious case. Can you look at it and, you know, get back to me and let me know what's going on or explain it to me, right? Well, there's nothing we can there's nothing we can or should be doing about trying to solve those. But there's another, you know, people people come to us and they say, um, I want to tell you about the problem that uh we don't have middle school sports because of COVID or we have vaccine requirements, or we need better teacher mentoring or small classes, or should we add portable classrooms to Kelly? All of those are things that people come to us where we're the chain of command. We're not in the chain of command. Those are, I mean, I, none of us can do something as individuals. But those are our decisions that are within the board's purview as policy or budget things. I don't think those are things that are I mean, we could talk with the superintendent and I would not go to some, you know, superintendent staff member without going through the superintendent. But those are not things that have to go to the superintendent automatically. Those are things that ultimately, we're going to decide. And so to say, oh, really? Tell me more about that. I want to get more information. Yeah, I think this, I agree with this. I don't agree with that, whatever. So I I want to make, I think there's a real distinction, and there's a whole lot of things. Those are things people coming to us as board members. They're not coming to me as their friend, and they're not coming to vent. They are coming because they want us to do something. But the things they want us to do are the things that are within the purview of our role as board members.
Right. Good comment. Yeah. You know, I think that, you know, it's it's like, um, you know, the Supreme Court case on pornography, we said we can't define it, but we all know it when we see it. I think that kind of that's the thing with this. We got to figure out how to define it because I I think that when I hear you talking, everyone kind of is saying you know, how they understand how this is supposed to be used and not used, which is just as important. And so I'm just trying to tinker with words to Martina.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, again, I think for me, this comes to, this comes down to the lack of connection between those sentences, right, which which really leads to these misunderstandings because what what this is meant to address is when people are coming to us with information that they expect us to act on or that we that a board member could theoretically choose to act on in ways that are inappropriate. Like, that's what this this is meaning to regulate. So I have a proposal. If anyone would like to hear a sentence. Yeah, all right. English professor hat on. Okay. Um, and it is still two sentences. So when a board member receives information about a concern or complaint from a stakeholder, they will not seek to address those issues directly with staff members, such as by requesting reports, et cetera, and instead shall relay that information to the superintendent. This only applies when a board member is acting in their official capacity, not informal conversations that board members participate in their roles as its community members, et cetera.
Proposal. Martina, can you type that in the chat for us to look at, too?
Um, we have historically not used the chat because for, just for for public meetings
Okay.
for for capturing that in the uh minutes.
Yeah.
But since I just read it aloud and therefore it will be in the minutes, do we feel differently about it this time? I'm I'm seeking consensus on whether or not chat is cool this time around.
I think if you put in exactly what you just said, then that's fine.
Yeah, then it's easier to see. While you're typing in, Judy, please.
Great. Uh, that was really great wording. I was hoping you were working on wording, Martina, English. But I just want to talk a little bit about Gordon's point because I think there's, you know, there are different reasons that people you know, different actions, some things that we as a board actually could do something about and some things that we can't when there's staff issues. But I would say that it would still make me feel you about going. So I let's, let's take the middle school sports example. You know, I might hear that from a lot of parents. We might get a lot of emails. You know, I I do, I think a really good move, you know, I'm going to the superintendent to ask permission to bring it up. But it might be, there might be more to the story that she knows. What went into this? Why are we doing this? Just to get more information and also it would be a better discussion at the board if staff had an awareness and could bring what's going on. It doesn't in inform or influence how you might want to act or feel about it. But it just feels like it would be a more balanced, robust, you might get more information in that process. So that's why I would keep the superintendent, again, as our employee in the loop.
Yeah, it's always good to get as much information as possible before you make a decision. And sometimes there's just things that everybody doesn't, not everyone has all the information you need to get more, like, bring everybody in with part of the puzzle. Alicia, please. I'm sorry, Alicia.
Hey, whatever. I got it. Um, it's like Alicia Keys. Let's just go ahead and make that connection. Alicia, that's why I say it that way. Quit laughing, Laurel. My last name is only two off, two letters, and I could be Alicia Keys. Anyhow, um. You know, listening to everybody talk, uh, it it seems really, it it just helps with that clarity, I think, as we as a a group, a team, um, kind of have clarity with each other. Um, I haven't seen, this can be a major problem. I think people had said, you know, it's like, I didn't get uh told a story and then I run to the head of transportation and say, how come you're not picking up Johnny on Horn Lane or something? I think that's what it's intended to do. And I think every one of us had kind of talked about that. Uh, before Martina spoke, I was going to suggest we hand it to Martina and let her words with it.
There you go.
Because she's got that PhD. Um, uh, but anyhow, I I think I liked it. I think you captured really what we're trying to do. And and Gordon, I appreciate your clarity, you asking those questions. Um, because, you know, since the budget committee, I've had a number of calls of people saying, well, if we're going to add this, why not add this? And, you know, I'm not going to go talk to the superintendent about that, but during the meeting, I'll say, hey, I heard this. Um, I'm not asking for any reports. I'm just kind of putting it into the into the general conversation. And I think we as professional board members make those decisions uh about if we want to get something done, uh, what's the best path? But this is to keep us, I believe, from uh taking that directly. Uh, like I said, to head of transportation or even to the bus operator on that route and ask them why they're not picking up Johnny on Horn Lane. Does that make sense? So like, we're a lot of clarity and Martina, I just want your parents to know you're using your PhD. They should be proud of you.
Yeah, that definitely, you know, gives it more direction and um you know, it's not quite so much of the amoeba moving around. Gordon?
Um, I I guess I just, I mean, I agree with the examples that Alicia just gave, like, I agree a thousand percent with about the bus driver or anything that is like that. I think we all, I don't I don't think that stuff is controversial, but the there's a, um, you know, there are a fair number of situations where people come to us, which I think is different than, I think this is trying to get at us not abusing our authority or pretending we have authority that we don't have or disrupting the relationships between, you know, teachers, principals, assistant superintendents, superintendents. But, you know, I've had, you know, several situations where groups of uh parents of PTO in different schools that, hey, you know, we have this concern, we're collecting information from families, we want to get that together, we want to meet with you to explain it. So that, you know, would be, I think, would be um unintentionally barred by the language that you just shared, Martina, right? It's, I I think we're I think we're clear in what we don't want. Like, I'm not going to be, we shouldn't be calling up people who work for the district and say, hey, I want the report on what the bus routes go like or anything like that. But but we don't want to restrict our ability to talk with to to especially to have people come to us and say, we want to explain this concern. We want it, we're, we're talking to our coworkers, we're talking to our other parents, we're talking to whoever, we want you to understand this, and this is, and we're talking to you as a board member because this is something that you could address by policy or like within the purview of the board as opposed to we want you to solve my specific problem, or we want you to call my principal and tell him to do something. So I that, I think that's still um you know, and I don't want to get overly, uh, like, spend our whole lives debating about wordsmithing because I think we agree, but I also don't want to sign off on something that uh that unnecessarily constricts what we can do because we have, you know, on some occasions, we we have had substantive and not just wordsmithing disagreements about the appropriate rules on that.
I I don't see how this statement would prohibit you or prevent you from getting any of those um uh, any of those uh comments from the stakeholders. Uh, it just simply says that you won't, you know, resolve them by yourself or with someone other than the superintendent. I think that you could, and I think any of you uh could could continue to receive um information. That's, you know, that's one of your big roles uh to do. I could be wrong, but just by looking at it there, I don't see how it's a limitation except on um talking to anyone other than the superintendent. I could be wrong. Maya?
So, oh, I um, I really want these things to be as clear as possible, and sometimes the use of et cetera leaves open a lot of room for interpretation. So again, at the end, um, instead of just parents, community members, et cetera, parents are community members. So community members by itself encompasses the roles that we would take outside of our role as board members because we can't be employees. So the only other option is community members. Um, and then that would leave a little less ambiguous language. Um, and then that would leave a little less ambiguous language. And then up above also just, I think that the example, it's just an example that can sit by itself because that, that also leaves open to. Does that fall into that category? Um, I think. So, uh, I, I have other things to say, but in the, in the name of not dragging this out forever, I'll just leave it at.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, but yeah, I think that was kind of a quick draft. I would have thought, I would have thought or think that. Uh, you know, this would be something that would be worked on really tightly and maybe looked over by someone who has authority to look over it in the. District, maybe legal or something to make sure, but. There are just, you know, if you, you know. You could take the et cetera out and use one example or two. Uh, I would be a little careful about saying parents are automatically community members because we do have some absentee parents, parents that live away. That would not necessarily be a member of this community. And we have people that are, you know, incarcerated. We have people that are working out of state. So a parent, you know, in there, I guess you guys wouldn't be, yeah, you guys would be incarcerated.
Right. I don't read that as.
Line. Yeah, this would have been the first line. Sorry, my bad.
And I don't mean it as a community member of the Eugene community. I mean it of the four J community. So a parent who lives in Idaho, in my opinion, is a four J community member.
Sure. Okay, I get it. Get it. Okay, great. I'm sorry, Martina, then Laurel, then back to Gordon.
So I feel like we have gotten pretty clear on the intent and pretty clear on. The, the goal that we as a board have for what this is gonna do. I wonder whether we have hit the point of diminishing returns on, um, on the spot wordsmithing. And whether this might perhaps be something that, having taken lots of notes now on what everyone has said, this draft, other thoughts. Um, that people have raised, whether this might be something that, um, we could bring back, um, in a final draft form. At our next meeting. And not continue to belabor it now.
Uh, that makes a lot of sense. You know, at some point you're, you're gonna have to vote for this or against it. And so it's like, you know, how much? How much do you want to live with it or, uh, you know? Object to it. Laurel, please.
Um, yeah, so I, I like, um, what Martina proposed. I would like it to read, uh, more. When a board member receives information that they. That they can, either they find concerning or they believe rises to a level of a, um, a certain level. That would make them do something with it, then they would do the rest. I am tired, so I'm not wordsmithing it myself, but I'm saying, please add this to the notes because I would like it definitely to. Read that it. As it reads, it's inaccurate when we receive information about a concern or complaint from a stakeholder. That's inaccurate. It should be when it rises to a certain level, then we will take it and, and also will not. Ask everybody for information about it.
Thank you. Gordon.
Thanks. First of all, Martina, I appreciate your willingness to. To take this on and I, I agree. I think we're at the point where it'd be good to, to kind of move on and have somebody come back with another draft version next time we meet. So the only, the only final two things of input that I want to give you to think about when you write the next draft. Is to me, um, where it says they will not seek to address, I would say they will not seek to resolve those issues because the address is pretty broad. And then I would just take out the like, and instead shall relay that. Like the point is we want to limit our authority. Some things you may want to bring to the superintendent or not, depending on confidentiality, depending on all kinds of things, but we want to be clear that we are not the people. Who can either resolve problems. Or tell anybody who works in the district what they should be doing or what information they should be giving us.
I, I had wondered about that too, Gordon, like act upon or resolve. I hadn't quite thought that through. I was going to, I added in my notes to think about it. Good. Great. So, um, I think that as boards you will work on that and have, uh, something that. Everybody can live with when this gets ready to be voted on. Thanks for everyone's input and conversation. So moving on to section three, information requests supported by a majority of the board will be honored as soon as possible. Information requests by individual board members that can be expected to require roughly fifteen minutes or more. Of staff work or staff resources will be before, I'm sorry, will be referred by the superintendent to board leadership. Or the full board to determine if the request to use resources aligns with board and district priorities. Board members may always elevate an informal request for information to a formal agenda item by proposing it. In a regular board meeting. How are we? I, I guess I would, if I were just changing that right off, I would just say information requests supported by a majority of the board. That's an important ask. Shall be honored, um, and responded to as soon as possible, whether that will or shall. If the board is asking for information that can be provided by the district through the superintendent. Then, um, you know, that's, that's maybe a little more important to ask and. That was just, you know, something I thought of there. Individual board members, uh, you know, if, if something you're asking for takes a protracted amount of time. That's always something to think about, especially right now. I mean, that really pops into our head. So the, there would be, you know, need to make sure that it's, uh, you know, it aligns with the policies that are people having. Uh, concerns or thoughts about this section.
I think Martina has her hand up.
Oh, Martina, I'm sorry. Blends right in with where your light is.
That's totally fair. Um, so I, I think that, um, and, and please others correct me if I'm misremembering. Um, I think that this, the sort of specifics around fifteen minutes and that discussion arose. Two and a half years ago when we last did this. Um, and was, as, was really about, you know, some folks potentially being concerned that like, oh, does this mean that any time? Any board member wants to ask anything of, any question to a staff member that it must first go to the superintendent. And so there was kind of a, you know, uh, in a board meeting, if a, if a board member said, hey, I'd like to know more about that. Uh, we don't necessarily need to look for a majority opinion if it's like. An incredibly small ask that potentially a staff member could do with an email. However, I do think that. Nothing has proven more than the last two years that, um, that, that staff are overloaded and that board members may not always know. Just how close to the edge, um, folks are on their scheduling. And so I, I might suggest that we remove that. Second sentence, um, and just. Leave it with the notion that the superintendent is going to honor as soon as possible information requests. Um, and that, that we, that we have some trust, um, on this one that, um, that folks are going to, to do their best to, to honor those requests.
And thank you for, um, the explanation and the recognition that things have changed since the last time this was done. Gordon, please, and then Laurel.
Thanks. I, if I understand it right, I think I would support this language. I think it's important. To have a distinction between individual requests and board majority requests. And, and my understanding of this language is. We're saying the fifteen minute rule applies to individual requests because we don't want staff to be, I mean, especially now, but really anytime to be bombarded by. Somebody who says, I want to know this and this and this and this because I'm really curious. But when the whole board, when, or when a majority of the board says, it's really important to us to know. I don't know, how many kids are reading a level up third grade divided by demographics or something like that? Then that's, then that's on a different track, that that's not the fifteen minute rule. And to me, they're the, the, as soon as possible is not meant to make. Be whenever you get to it, but like with some urgency, understanding that, you know, whatever, life is life and everything can't always be immediate. Because I think that part of the. I know everybody's, everybody in the school system is stretched incredibly thin, but part of the job of staff is to enable the board. To make intelligent decisions. So I think on things that the board decides as a majority, this is an important thing. That we want information about, then we're kind of trusting the judgment of the board majority, which is separate from any individual being able to endlessly ask for things.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. And I, I think that, I think that just kind of really sums it up is that. Uh, you don't want to be in a position where anyone can overwhelm staff or, you know, make multiple requests. If, if that information is sought and someone on the board needs it, you might want to stop and think, could everybody on the board benefit from that information? Yeah. Uh, Laurel, please.
Uh, yeah, so I like it, uh, written and I would like it to. It, well, it does say individual board members. So I guess we can add individual board member requests or something to that. But, um, so, um, I think it's a pretty normal agreement. I've seen this in other boards, so. Thanks.
Sure.
And I, I do, I wanted to say I do like the fifteen minutes because sometimes you have a, a quick, simple question. And people aren't happy to, to make that answer and to make everything go, uh, one direction is, I don't think.
Yeah. Judy.
I get, just want to say thank you. I mean, I really agree. I, I appreciate Gordon's comments and rules and. Especially as someone newer, again, on the board, when I first came up, you know, I had ideas and I wanted to ask for information. I was just curious. And board, you know, staff members really want to accommodate you as a board member. And sometimes it was a good, you know, I had no idea if I was asking them to do a lot, you know, a lot of work or not. So. I just think that's very respectful and it just makes me think and I, it's good guidance. So. And you're right, it probably is common sense to many Laurel, but it's, it's not bad to say it, so.
Thank you. Um, I just been kind of still running this around in my head and grabbed a thought. Um, so one, one of the things that, uh, I want to jump back to number, um, two for just a minute, Martina. One of the things that, where it says, um, when a board member receives information and you aren't sure about it. You might just put in your notes to tinker a little bit that when a board, a member receives information that they believe or feel, feels. Uh, warrants, you know, an immediate response or an immediate action or just a response. So that would give you all as board members a, a bit of discretion. There about, I think it was Gordon that brought that up, you know, I need to make a decision between this or this. So just to kind of tinker that in there. And if it doesn't work, then it's okay. Don't put it in. And I'm sorry to jump back. I was just, sometimes I want to try to keep thinking about things. Great. So, uh, number three looks pretty good. Um, number four, when attending meetings or speaking directly to district staff. Board members are expected to respect and understand their status as elected leaders of the school district and how this. How this position will be received. Can we change it to their position? How their position will be received, maybe just for reading purposes. It is important to keep communication on district issues focused to the superintendent. I'm not sure that we need the last line if we have worked number two so well. That might be redundant in that we're doing that again. It's just a thought or a comment. So it would leave it at a one line statement. That, that talks about, um, conscious, being conscious of your, uh, position. As a, you know, an elected school board member and leader in our schools and how that perception happens. So that's just my comment. Um, Laurel, please, and then Maya.
I don't think this needs to be here. I think it's against freedom of speech. Um, nobody can, everybody find, defines respect differently. And somebody can understand what this means as just. And it's happened already that I have been, people have said I would have been rude to people by what I said was. We have had staff that have said something different than what you're telling me. And that was me being blatantly rude and disrespectful and attacking. So. It can be abused by people against board members and I do not, I didn't, and it's also, it's not legal.
I, I would like to say here that I don't think this is. A distinct prohibition on speech. I think it's a. A direction. It would not prohibit you from saying something. It would ask for some conscientiousness. Around how it's said.
And that's defined by all different people, different ways. So there's no way to define it correctly.
Yeah, and that's always going to happen, but when we ask for respectful conversation, we. Because people define things differently, we have to be really careful about doing away with them. I would, that doesn't mean it can't be wordsmithed, but I, I hope. I hope that all of us understand the distinction between prohibiting speech and having speech. Having the conversation happening in a certain way. So I, I, I just want to make real, I, I, there's, there's, I think there's a big distinction that this does.
Stop being talking, right?
No, this does not prohibit free speech. You know, it, it just prohibits, it, it doesn't even prohibit anything, you know? It says that you have to, you're expected to, if you choose not to follow the expectations of the working agreement. Then that still is an expression of your personal choice. It may make it difficult for you to work with people, but it, it. It's not saying you can't talk to them. It just says, and, and, and I, I want to wait for just a minute, you know, as a school district, we have. All kinds of rules about the way we talk to each other in the classrooms, that the way we talk to each other, we allow kids to talk to each other. And so perhaps though, and this is my opinion, this is totally completely my opinion. Perhaps in the district, we should look to our top leaders to be the best models for that conversation. And I kind of think that's what this is saying here. And if I choose not to model that behavior, I, it doesn't prevent me from speaking.
I don't, what, I don't think you heard me when they, when it was used to say something different.
Explain what you mean to me, but explain to me what you mean by that, please, Laurel, when it was used to say something different. I, I, you're right, I don't understand that.
So they were saying I was being attacking a staff member and being rude because I. I didn't agree exactly with what there's, they, that staff member said. I was very polite the whole time. I said it correctly. It was all within the bounds and I have very high levels of what I perceive. Is correct communication. And, but it is, was used inappropriately to say I was not. Talking, I was attacking. So what I'm, I will not sign something that has somebody else defining how I speak. Because it's against, and when I say freedom of speech, I'm not saying they're stopping me from talking. I'm saying I have a right to speak and they can define it however they want. But in our working agreement. How this is written, it says, somebody else gets to decide. How and how I talk is appropriate or not, and I will not sign that. I don't think any black woman would.
I, I would be real careful about saying things just like that, Laurel, because I don't want the divisiveness here. None of us want to be talked to badly. And, um, we need to think about the board as a group as opposed to, and I get it because I'm a person of color too. I get it. But I, I want to just say, you know, that. Never mind. Maya, please.
There we go. Um, I think you, you hinted at this or said it directly Brenda, but that second send a sentence of it's important to keep. Finish the blank. Um, it, it's, um, it's, it negates the work we just did on number two. Um, so I, I would, I would ask that we scratch that whole sentence completely. Um, I also feel like the whole point of this is restating what we just kind of said in number two, but with some. More broadened out parameters like meetings or directly to, to district staff. I would be okay keeping it, but I would request that we take out the two respects because I think if we are understanding our status. That encompasses respect, um, but it doesn't leave the ambiguous word that respect is. Um, unless we're going to sit and agree on a definition of respect. I, I'm personally gonna suggest that anytime we see that in any of our working agreements, it, it would be worthwhile scratching. Um, it's just, it's just too ambiguous for working agreements. We can't all have a different definition of what we're reading in these statements. A different definition of what we're reading in these statements.
That was thoughtful. I think on that a little bit, that's 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 very thoughtful. Gordon, please.
Um, I I also would support taking out the the second sentence and and after listening to Maya, I feel like I might support Um, taking out the whole thing. And as I, I agree that we shouldn't be saying, oh, people need to speak respectfully because that just opens up It's like an invitation for disagreements about what that means, but I don't think that that's what this is intended to. It says that we should respect Our status as elected leader, like my understanding of what this is saying is like, we should be aware that if I'm talking to A group of employees in a school and I say, um, I don't know, oh yeah, I think it would I I think it would be great if the windows were open all the time during the spring. That they might take that as, oh, we should really keep the windows open during the spring because from a board member, people may May interpret an opinion or suggestion as if it carries more weight than it should, and that what the real purpose of this Is for us to be clear with people on what our roles are and what the limits of our authority are, not to It it's all about us not overstepping our authority or the impression of our authority. And I I, so maybe there's a way to totally reword it that's clearer, or maybe that's already I I think that may already have been addressed after the whole discussion about the previous point.
And it's funny that you said be aware because that was such a good word while you were talking. I wrote to be cognizant Of their status, which, and it make be aware is such a better word. It's so much easier and So I thought that was very, that I was struggling for a word and then you just put that one right there. I I'm not, I I'm just thinking about scrapping it. It's just, again, this is a working agreement that if you get someone new to the board, it would be A good um roadmap for them to be aware of Of the fact that they're now on the board. It makes for a different, you know, position, just like Gordon says, if I go in and say Oh yeah, that, I like those school colors and someone was, you know, maybe fearful for their position or their job or something might very Very well respond when it's just a conversation. Yeah, good, that was a good point.
I think that's true, but it may just be too subtle a thing to try to put into words. And since we've kind of done a lot of work to say Here's what our role is not, like, we don't have this authority, we're not resolving problems, we're not telling any employee what they should be doing. That maybe that's, maybe it's defined enough before this.
Thank you, Judy.
Um, I really appreciate this conversation because um You know, I've, I I, what I've learned and I've learned More even more recently, you know, that I I agree that the term respect has different meanings to different people and it can be Some people can interpret it as an in- inhibition to free speech and it's ambiguous in the way it's in there. So I guess I would say, I think it's important. Uh, and I think to your point, even when you're new or not new, to be reminded that when you're an elected official and you're talking To people, you are perceived and you are in a different status. So there is sort of a power differential. And I, so keeping that in there to to be cognizant of, those are great words That your status as the elected leaders of school district and how you'll be perceived. And I, and and I could probably just be okay with that and take out respect altogether unless someone has another word That is more, is more um descriptive, that is um Not making some people feel like their speech is inhibited, but if not, I I think we could do without it.
Yeah, you could think of all the words to put in there that would come back to the same problem, you know, uh, uh, appropriate, uh, you know, with regard. No matter how you say it, it's going to come back to my personal uh choices. And you know, if we speak well or nicely to people, you know, they tend to respond to us more. If we don't, then they don't, and that's That may be, you know, I I can be really harsh and so sometimes people think I'm just You know, being that way when in reality I'm just getting my words out. And so those are individual, um Those are individual behaviors that we would have to work on with each other as communication as opposed to a board member. As opposed to being a board member. Martina.
Okay, can I offer a revision?
Sure, let's hear it.
Um, so in listening to what folks are saying, I think um, my understanding here is that The potential benefit of having something to this effect in here is just to um call people to Perhaps think a little bit more about the ways that their status is as a elected official Uh may change how others perceive them or hear the things that they're saying regardless of their intent. Um, so to my mind, um, perhaps we can just say that. Um, and uh, so I would propose something like understanding that, oh, and you know what? Hold on, before I read this out loud, I will say. Um, if anybody is also like really visual and wants to see this, instead of sending it through the chat, what we could actually do is Open up the live transcript because you'll be able to see um the full transcript as it transcribes my words. And that way we're both able to see what I'm saying and also not potentially using The chat function in a way that could be um challenging for the, for the minutes reporter and for all of that. Does that feel okay to folks? Okay, cool, I'm seeing nods. Um, so what I would propose is something along the lines of Understanding that as a member of a board, their public comments may be perceived as having more influence or power than they intend. Board members will be mindful of their status as elected leaders and how they may be perceived when speaking publicly. So there's no, there's no um prohibition, there's not even any uh thing saying how a person should act. It's just asking Perhaps be mindful of the way that you may be perceived.
I think that whole sentence that you said the, after the comma, be mindful, might be Might be all that's needed. Be mindful of how you act as an elected official. Um, you know, and you guys can self-regulate and things like that. That might That might be very succinct. I I like the other part too, but I'm just kind of to think of uh if people are in disagreement about power or something. Maya and then um Gordon, please.
Yeah, I I um Um. Now, I mean, I don't know how much wordsmithing we want to do on this, but I think that that mindful part is important. Um, and and I'm not sure we need to change the whole sentence so dramatically, but maybe just something more like when attending meetings Or speaking directly to district staff. Board members are expected to be mindful of their status as the elected leaders of the school district and how this position will be perceived. And it takes up the part about intention and that 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 gets a little gray area again also, but Um, but I do, I do also appreciate that mindful point. I just think, I I think that the sentence is not, is not a It's not a bad one as it is. I think that it just needs a a little bit of tweaking instead of completely being totally restructured.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was good. That mindful is a great word. Um, Gordon.
Uh, you know, I don't feel so strongly about this. I'm sure there's different versions I could go with. To me, I'd feel like I think we all agree on what the thing is that we're saying here. I can't remember a time when somebody didn't act this way that I know of anyway. Um, but it feels like given the various forms of occasional tensions we've had between us To to write something that just, I I don't know what it gives us and my fear is it gives us A place where somebody could say, oh, you weren't, you really weren't mindful, you needed to be more mindful. And I don't think we need more opportunities to Like scold or or, you know, reprimand each other about anything. I think everybody knows what this is and it's not just about board members, right? It's like if the superintendent goes to a school and says, oh, I love the color green you have on the classroom and a teacher could think, oh, That means I should really have my classroom green all the time and not change it to purple like I was thinking. And we are, we all live with that, like that's how, that's what it is to be any kind of authority figure. So I think this is true for a lot of people and I I I don't, I don't see really, well, I think we all understand this. I think we all support it. I don't see what we get by putting it in writing, but if everybody wants to and there's a version people agree to, I'm fine with that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, oh yes, there, I thought I saw another hand, Martina.
So is this a moment where having taken lots of, having multiple options, we could perhaps have this be on the list of things that Judy and I bring back In draft form next time?
Yeah.
I'm seeing nods, wonderful. It's, it goes on the list.
Perfect, yeah. It, I I understand what Gordon is saying, but sometimes we kind of need to remind ourselves in our writings. Whoops, that was me. Um, number five, board members will communicate questions or concern about agenda items To the superintendent and board leadership. Does anyone have a problem with that? Is that something you do all the time? Um, whoops, sorry, Laurel.
Is it possible to have something in there that will, we will be responded to because many times there's no response?
So um, sometimes you're just giving, um, are you giving them information or are you asking for a response? I guess that would be the question of the email. And if you say I have this concern. You know, sometimes thank you is a response that you, and you don't want to get into that kind of an issue.
It's, it's agenda, so.
Right.
Uh, so it's uh, the When things are happening with the agenda, I, we've actually talked about the agenda part Four or five years ago, is that right? Um, um, about that. So, I mean, we, we, we wordsmithed this and talked it through, but I just, the only part about it is, is that Sometimes you just feel like you're, I'm will absolutely willing to do this, but the hard part is There, it doesn't mean that anything is ever going to come of it. So I was just wondering if, and that other agreement that there will be some sort of a response From the board chair if possible. Doesn't have to mean it's every time, maybe she's in Barbados. I hope you get to go to Barbados, Judy. Um, but it's just that it's It, it would be helpful because it it's, what happens is that you just stop trying.
Think, I'm thinking on it, I'm thinking on it, um, trying to put that all into my head, um, how to make that go, uh, and still listen to Gordon, please.
Um, thanks, somebody could tell me if this is wrong. I, my understanding of what this means is that Um, if we can, out of courtesy, the board, it'd be good for board members to communicate To the superintendent and board leadership. If there's something that we're going to rate, like there's something on the agenda, we're going to say, hey, I just want to get it to let you know. I have this problem or this question or this whatever that's going to come up that feels like that's a Uh, you know, not a hard and fast rule, but would be like a good courtesy and make the meetings work better. And if that's what we're talking about, then I would say some version of that and I think it, you know, it's not an iron rule, but it's a, it is courteous, does make the meetings work better and that would be fine. I don't know, other than that, I don't know, I can't imagine what else it means. I don't think it means Anytime you have any concern about any issue, it has to be communicated to the superintendent. If it's an issue that's on the agenda, I don't think it means that. So if we're just talking about giving people a heads up to make meetings Go okay and people not caught by surprise, that seems like an easy enough thing.
Thank you. Um, Maya. Uh, yeah, I'm not sure what it means because I'm not a board member. People with more history would know better than I. Maya.
So these are board working agreements, not necessarily um superintendent working agreements. So I I I appreciate what Laurel's saying about receiving a response. And I, and I think even just acting at the end, um, and and putting it on the board leadership as At the burden on the board leadership to be the person responsible for responding, that was a little heavy on the responding word. Um, but um, you know, if if board leadership leaves it to the superintendent to make the response Then that still is being followed through, but same thing maybe at the end that That's just like an and clause that's, you know, and shall receive timely response or something like that, just so that it's It's, it's not, there, there's an understanding that your um communication won't just be sent out into the void. If that makes sense.
It makes total sense. Um, thank you. You know, I was just trying to refer back in some ways, I, you know, I I think Um, someone pointed out, I think it was Laurel that we, three years ago, which was really probably just several months ago. But that was, um, you know, if you look under agenda planning in our agreements, our second item, we spent Lots of time on that. And I believe we did say, and um You could hold me and our leadership accountable if you're not hearing back when you say things, because we said in the agreements there that That um, we would communicate the next steps decided for the proposed topic to the requesting board member. So I I sort of think that this item might be redundant, given what is in that item. And we, we went through it in detail. So I guess I would say, hold me accountable if you're aren't hearing back.
Thank you, Judy. Um, thanks for referring back to that other one too. Um, Alicia.
Thanks. Um, I, I think this is, I should say, Gordon, I think you hit the nail on the head about what this one is. It's a heads up because here's my concern and I just want to be clear, which is If I don't like something that's on the agenda, I think you should do it a different way. And I call, I talk to leadership and they change it, we do lose transparency. I wouldn't expect um much of a response back. I would expect it done uh at our board meeting. So if I gave you a heads up and said, I'm going to ask that we move this item down to This, you know, this, this does happen because I think it it's more appropriate here than there. Um, I, you know, thank you is what I would expect. Uh, and then I would expect it done in uh public because again, we are a board that does our work in public. And so if I can make a deal with you, Judy, and shorten things on the agenda uh by calling you, yeah, I'll, I'm on it. Uh, but I've never seen that happen. So, thanks.
Nice comment. So, yeah, when this, you know, comes back, you can decide if you've set it in agenda setting or if you um Just want to say you address, I might Yeah, we, it's just hard to make people respond. Um, number six, the board chair or designee is the official spokesman Spokesperson, I'm sorry, is the official spokesperson for the board. If a media request is made to another member who is not the chair, That member may speak with the media as an individual member and should inform the board as a whole. I think you need to take out the word individual member because now you're talking about individual member of the board. And maybe that member, because the member of the board may speak with the media as an individual. Not an individual member where they say, well, I'm on the board, but I'm saying this, you know, as an individual member of the board. It still has some connotation that you're speaking for the board instead of yourself uh personally. Um, Alicia, please. Oh, sorry, doggone it. Sorry, thank you so much. Um, Laurel, please, and then Gordon.
Um. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it again to, uh. So the board chair, I think if the media request is made of another member who is not the chair, that member may speak With the media as an individual member, it actually is accurate. Um, I recently spoke to the media as an individual member of the board and that is absolutely accurate. Um, and And should inform the board as a whole, that's not happening. Because we've had other people speak to media and they haven't informed the board. Um, so if we're going to have that part, Maybe there should be a time limit of, on it, like, as, within the week of doing this. Or we should just get rid of informing the rest of the board because the board seems to find out in the paper.
Thank you. Gordon.
Um, I, I also was going to say the thing that Laurel said at first, which I do think that we get Sometimes get calls about things that we're not, we're not being asked, in my opinion, as a parent, whereas, you know, somebody who lives in Eugene. We're being asked, you know, as a school board member, what, so you disagree with this opinion, what do you think? And we need to be totally clear that we're not speaking for the board as a whole. But we are speaking as an individual board member. So I think it makes sense to keep that language and on the, on the Should inform the board as a whole, I Uh, I guess I just think like most things in the working agreements, this is a I don't know, to sometimes I like ask, look, it's not a hard and fast thing, we're saying it would be good to let other people know, but It's nothing, and nothing here is mandatory, nothing is required. I don't think there's a way To make people do it faster or slower or not do it at all, and so uh.
Yeah. Thank you both Laurel and Gordon for explaining the difference between individual and individual member. I appreciate that. I didn't see that. Yeah, and Gordon is right, it says should inform, you know, it's not mandatory. If you want them to let the board know, then I guess you would have to change that language. That was a, a good comment too. Thank you. Maya, please.
I um, I I I deeply appreciate this one. I've spoken to the media twice and one time I Informed the board as a whole, including the superintendent. Um, and then the second time I informed just the chair. So I I might leave it under the purview of the chair if it needs to go to the board as a whole, but at least um You know, noting that it should, at a minimum, the chair should be informed um so that they're not caught off guard. Um, but I, regardless, I think somebody needs to be informed. I think that it's um It's, it's a, a cur- I think that it's um, it's it's a courtesy that that as board working agreements, it feels important to me that we extend that courtesy to each other.
So so there doesn't seem to be a lot of disagreement with this section, except perhaps mandatory versus discretionary. Thing and maybe a timeline, but you know, everyone. If it if it's should, that is discretionary. Um, you know, I don't see any reason to tinker with it unless everyone, unless there's people really concerned. It seems to be pretty forward and says what both Laurel and Gordon explained very well, thank you. Okay, moving on to number seven. The board chair will be responsible to answer in writing all correspondence sent to the board. All board members will be copied on responses. However, board members should be cautious to abide by the Oregon Public Meeting Law, O R S one nine two. With regard to serial meetings via electronic communication, avoid the use. Uh, reply to all, the board will strive for a response time for a response timely response to the court correspondence.
Am I right that something's not written correctly there?
I know, I think I just, I think I hiccuped when I read it, the board, the board chair will strive for a response. You might put that is timely, that is a timely response to the correspondence. You could put that in there just so you don't have two responses together, shall strive for a response that is time, is a timely response to the correspondence. That's pretty.
I think this is a type, I do, I actually do think this is a typo that it's meant to say the board chair will strive for a timely response to correspondence.
Yeah, perfect, that's great, yeah. Oh, yeah, turn those two words backwards, I get it, yeah, that's perfect. Um, yeah. I think that the training we went to, uh, when I was attended the last board meeting, kind of taught us about that respond all. Whoosh. Okay, any problems with this section, seems to be pretty straightforward, good, great. We'll move on, please, to number eight. In some instances, board members may have an existing professional relationship or volunteer relationship with schools, programs, or Eugene four J staff. That necessitates interactions in the board members' capacity as a private citizen or volunteer. The board member must clearly state the visit or interaction has no official board related purpose. The board member should inform the superintendent and building administrator of this visit or interaction. When visits or interactions are part are as a part of a work or volunteer schedule. The board member should inform the superintendent, to the extent possible, of the schedule of meetings. I remember the first time I saw Mary Walston. Um, was she was volunteering at a school? And when I came in, I was like, oh, my gosh, hello, and she said, I volunteer here to teach children to read. And I thought that was such a profound statement that she let me know, just as a an employee, you know, just as a person there that this was her volunteer work. And um, and I and I I look at this section now, and I think, oh, that's exactly what what some board members do. Uh, Maya.
I think this is covered by the part where we talk about being aware of our um status. I I I um, I have two kids in four day and a huge history of volunteering and intend to do so when it's a little more open to folks. And and the staff is excited to see people in the building um uh or feel safe. I I I I um, the way that I approached this uh was, I don't think Sydney wants to know exactly what time I pick up my kid, on which days and which days I have somebody else picking him up and all those things. I mean, I I guarantee you she doesn't want to, she's got a lot on her plate. On the other hand, I told the principal, for example, I will let you know when I am here in my official capacity. And if I don't say so, assume I'm here as Tessa's mom or Kai's mom. Um, so this one, I feel um, it's really covered by being being cognizant, I love that word, Brenda, I'm I'm sorry, I I I think it's a fabulous word. But being cognizant of our role, it like when 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 you described what Mary did, she was being aware of her presence and what that presence means. And I think that it's covered in that part up above, and I think that it's a little too. There's a little too much constraint here and a little too much um requiring of of communication that that could end up being a little bit overwhelming. And leave a lot of room for error.
So I think, just from my point of view, I think this is an important section. I did, although it may not need all the verbiage that you're talking about, Maya. I think that the acknowledgement that every one of you do other volunteer type work and have family work. You could say something very simply like, board members shall be. Shall be transparent in their relationships with um the school or whatever school they're in. You know, it it would be very clear, it would be part of your working agreement, you could remind yourself, you know, board members will. You know, clearly communicate um when they are attending a school or a school function in the capacity of a board member. I just think that's a really good way you can say it, board members shall clearly state if you are attending an event as a board member. And then what Maya said is exactly true, if I don't tell you I'm here as a board member, I'm just here as a mom, or I'm just here doing something else. Okay, first, we have Martina.
So I just wanted to offer some history because in part this is in here because of me. When I began um my time on the board, I was still working at Planned Parenthood, where I was brought in as a guest um to schools throughout the state, honestly. Um, and so this was really um, in some ways, a response to that, right? Because there's um. I I think that I think that there is an impact that it can have on staff and administration if they're like wandering through the halls on their daily duties. And all of a sudden, they like slam bang into um, you know, a a board member and may may have that moment of what what am I supposed to be doing? Am I supposed to be responsible for something? Am I being surveilled, like that can feel kind of uncomfortable? And so the intention here was just to say, let's acknowledge that there are many roles that we play in the community and that we all have a lot of hats. And let's do our best as board members to keep superintendent and, you know, somebody like an administrator um informed when possible, if we're going to be there. And that that really that second half there like um should inform the superintendent to the extent possible of the schedule of meetings really is meant to be pretty loose. As I said, you know, two and a half years ago, my schedule changed a lot, and there was no way that I could have kept Dr. Valderras informed of everything that I was doing. Because I could barely keep track of my schedule. And so it was, it's really just in there as a courtesy, um, which I do think, and and Brenda, I'm so, I still see what you're saying, right? That we could have it as the inverse, like, oh, assume I'm here as a citizen unless you see me say I'm there as a board member. But I do think that that can still be a little confusing, and that if there's a board member, for example, volunteering in a classroom, that that might be something that administrators would want to know, just. Just as a way to feel comfortable, I know I would feel a little bit awkward if board members at my job were just suddenly at the office, even if they were there for, you know, some benign reason, I might feel a little huh on guard. So really, this is not intended to prohibit or again constrain anyone's behavior, and really just to sort of outline when and how communication can be useful.
Great, good comments, good background, thank you, uh Judy, please. You're still on, you're on mute, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, anyhow, I really appreciated that because I had some similar experiences that I was going to share. Because I go go into buildings not every week or all the time, but when I've just always gone into buildings with those early learning centers and resource centers because of my work. So I did notice, like I, you know, you usually check in in the office. And I I did notice a difference once I was elected to the school board, the principal would come out and go, oh, hi, you know, they would notice your presence. And I'd say, I'm just here, you know, visiting the preschool as always, and let them know. And I had, and I didn't necessarily call the superintendent every time I was going because it schedules would change. But I also informed the superintendent, I'm going to be doing that. So if a principal called and said, I saw the board member, you know, you go, early learning. I mean, I did my best to be proactive, but at least on that level, the same thing with being a parent or grandparent. I pick my kids up often from school, but I do know people notice that, and they know I'm there as a grandparent. And I've told them, you don't have to tell them every time, some of that's just common sense. So I think it is, it is sort of a um courtesy, for sure, to let them know.
Thank you, Judy, yep, I see you picking up your grandkids. Um, Mary and then Alicia, please.
Uh, thank you, I just wanted to uh comment, uh, Martinez is exactly right, the reason that was added was because of her status as a as a uh employee of Planned Parenthood. Thank you very much for your service and and. And then the part about informing the superintendent, because I was at three different schools, uh, and so I just liked Dr. Balderson, you know, Monday I'm at Holt, and that's where I saw you, Brenda. Uh, you know, Wednesday is I was at X school and Thursday I was at Y school. So so he kind of knew where I was and the staff knew. And then actually, right now, I'm volunteering at a school and I said, and the people I volunteer with, I don't think they know I'm the school board, and I've never told them, I just said, I'm here and because I got two kids in the school here. And uh, where's the trays, I want to help get get kids to lunch, so thank you for Martina for bringing that up, you are correct.
Thank you, seems to be working well, the way it's um, the way it's, you know, going, you you all seem to kind of know how to work it. And I've seen lots of you in schools, and you've always been really open about what you're kind of doing there. And I'm just, you know, I'm a staff member um and and that really took away that is someone coming into the classroom and observing me when I do my presentations. It took away that, like Martina says that, oh, no, does it have that chilling effect, Alicia? Nope, okay, thank you, Laurel.
Um, I I just don't find it necessary, I think it's a it's said in other places, and I find it, I I find it, it would be a bit self. Aggrand and grand sizement is saying that, you know, I'm here, no, I'm not a board member, I'm just here as Lucy's mom. And I just don't, I guess, or I'm here to help with the dance or something, I just don't think it's necessary unless, and I really like the idea of like. Hi, I'm here as the as part of the board, because that's going to be a lot less. And I think as parents, we are dealing and touching in a lot, and so it's just not necessary. I I I don't think it needs, we don't need to always define ourselves as board members and where we're at and what's going on. Um, I I don't think it's an issue, and if somebody asks me, I'll just be like, oh, I'm I'm here doing this, thanks. It it I don't think it's necessary, I think it's it's a bit overkill.
But I what I've heard said is that the board didn't think it was necessary either for a long time, and then Martina was elected and it it became something that was, you know, needed, so.
It doesn't work there anymore.
But there could be situations where it would arise, and it would just be, uh, you know, a guidance, Gordon.
Um, I I also think we could narrow this in some way, and I remember that, or my memory, anyway, Martina can correct me if this is wrong, is that that we did this largely to protect her. Because there were people who seemed like they might have think, oh, you're using your board position to somehow like aggrandize your work for Planned Parenthood, or like there's some inappropriate um crossing of of roles here. And that we wanted to have this language in to be to to make protection for Martina, that it was totally clear what the separation is. I don't know if Judy's work or Mary's work or like somebody else who has a really like an ongoing, whether paid or not, kind of work relationship with somewhere at the school might also want that language, which would be fine. But I think it, I think it was never intended, and I don't think we needed to cover things like going to a class play or helping with a dinner or helping with a field trip or thing. Those things seem um like they're they're covered by things that we say elsewhere, and I I think we could avoid getting into a question of like, oh, what are exactly the details for policing? If if we can somehow could define this, I think that what we're really talking about is like you're, you have an ongoing work role that is not about your, that is not about your membership on the board. Whether it's paid or unpaid, or maybe it's only matters if it's paid, that's different from showing up to the school for other kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Martina and then Laurel.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think this is one of those, one of those pieces where for folks who aren't affected by it, it may, it may seem unnecessary. But for folks who are, this felt very helpful for me and was really important to me when I was working at Planned Parenthood. And it is very possible that there could be another person who is in a similar situation. I mean, Judy, I think still is in a somewhat similar situation, um, and it may come up at times in other people's roles. And so because there isn't a, because this doesn't prohibit or ask very much of anybody other than someone who was in that position, I would really ask for it to be kept in there. And I will say that there was also a safety concern here, right? My work was work that was um not always safe to do, people made threats against us. And there were times when it felt really necessary for me to be able to say like, okay, I have, I have a policy, I have a procedure, I have some guidance to tell me what I should do here to make sure that I'm acting in a way that is responsible. And, you know, letting Gustavo know that I was going to be, you know, uh, doing a parent event um in the evening at a school on a Tuesday. Actually, really felt like something that was safer for me so that there was some awareness of that. So I would really, I would really um advocate for this staying in, even if it feels like it's not as relevant to everyone or may not be as relevant in this moment. Because we want to make sure that folks who are in jobs like the one I was in in the future, don't have an additional barrier um to service and that there is somewhat of a pathway there.
That's a great, great historical comment, you know, it doesn't prohibit anything. Yeah. I'm sorry, Judy.
I'm going to take Martinez's role here and just say, I think we have the intent, I think we could probably simplify that paragraph and not make it seem onerous to people who are parents, who are coming regularly. But in a way that covers the kinds of situations we're talking about for work and other things. So we will bring it back, hopefully simplified, but making that point.
Perfect.
You okay with that, when I say we, I mean, we're going to let Martino wordsmith, and I'm going to go, that sounds great, yeah.
Perfect. Great, thank you. Um, so number nine, board members at times may wish to learn more about a specific topic, issue, or program within the school district. These requests should first be made to the superintendent, see number two above that we talked about a lot. If a site or program visit is requested, this also um be made first to the superintendent, who can inform the building administrator or program staff. Further, from time to time, building administrators or program staff may proactively invite board members to a site or. Program visit as learning opportunities, these are encouraged. Again, board members should be in communication with the superintendent when such requests are received and should be mindful of the Oregon Public Meeting Law. Um, you might want to capitalize meetings in Oregon Public Meeting Law, it's a, you're using it as a proper name there, just a little bit of word tinkering. Um, thoughts, concerns, questions? I saw this one work perfectly in action when I invited um both the entire board to the natives program one year. And when I have invited individual board members to the natives program, I love that fact that you say it is encouraged. I think it's great that school boards can see how different things act, either as a board or as individuals, each one of us have our interests and things that are, you know, near and dear to us. I appreciate it when, you know, new board members reach out and ask about the programs and things like that. So I just want to compliment having this encouragement in there, I'm Gordon.
I I would, I think I would just cut this whole thing, but I think clearly if we're saying, um, I don't know, I want to go visit the, I want to make some official visit to a program, that event that's going on in the school. That that should go to the principal and and the super, it's fine with me to notify the superintendent's office. But there's so many other things that would be covered by this um, by this language, you know, a specific topic, issue, or program. I mean, we all have lots of relationships with lots of people who work in the schools, who talk to us all the time about things. I certainly have had people who said, oh, I, I don't know, I work in special education, I work in construction education, I work in counseling. And I said, oh, well, I don't, I don't know anything about that, or I don't know enough about that, like, you know, can we have coffee and tell me about that? Or they say, well, we have a good group of people who want to explain to you what's going on so that you under, so that you as a. Or they say, well, we have a good group of people who want to explain to you what's going on so that you under, so that you as a board member understand this. And they don't want to go through their principal or their, or the superintendent or anybody else. Now, those are, I think there's a difference between, I think if you're interrupting somebody's work in, you know, during the school day, that's a different thing. But if those meetings are happening not during, you know, not during work hours, then those are things we should encourage and not restrict. So I don't, it seems to me there's like a very narrow set of things that is pretty obvious about, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, oh, I want to see what you're really doing with, you know, how you're really using Dreambox. And so I'm going to come and, and sit in on the second grade classes and observe and make my judgments without telling anybody I'm coming. Like we'd, would, you know, we're not secret shoppers and we don't want to be that. And we don't want to have that relationship and we want to be courteous to everybody, you know, to all staffs or including superintendent and teacher. But there's lots of other things that I think this language covers and would restrict that we don't want to restrict. And the public meeting law also, I feel like we've, I certainly agree with that, but I feel like we've said that already.
Thank you, Laura.
Uh, yeah, I, I agree. I, I see this as an attempt at gatekeeping actually, because it's really kind of saying, do you have to, how I see it, that you have to, if we're invited somewhere, we have to say we're invited and where. And, and that could already be, have been done. And if it's not done by the school, then I say they just want us to come and see it. And it's not necessary. And it is addressed in other places. So, and, and as far as public meeting law, we already have to do that. That is something we already have to do again. Every time we have just unnecessary things in writing, it's just, it makes me wonder why it is done. Because it's, we have this information. I've only been here a limited amount of time and had very little onboarding. So I've had to learn all this stuff as I've gone along. So this is important thing. But I also find it's important that we can have a dialogue with staff or staff could want to show us something. And it doesn't have to be something that's permissible by the, the superintendent.
I'm not sure it's permissible. I think it was just a, I'm not sure it was permissible that the superintendent could prohibit it. I think it was, you know, you could, you know, make it to the superintendent. I'm, it doesn't, I may be misreading that. I'm, I'm just reading it quickly again, but I may just be misreading that. Maya, please.
This one is a little bit tricky. I, I really like it. And I'm thinking, I, I have the, the luxury of having a partner who's a 4J school teacher. So I, I, I hear what it's like when they look up and see a board member in the building and don't know they're going to be there or whatnot. At the same time, I, this fall was invited to a number of schools to come in and for different reasons, including to the natives program. And, and I, and I was very clear and very to the letter of this agreement about my, my visiting, partly because it's necessary right now, because you can't get in the buildings because of COVID unless like there's a, an awareness of who you are and why you're there. And then that you are cleared to come into the buildings. And it, and it was different in the different school cultures. So at one school, the administrator made it clear to the entire staff that I was going to be in the building and that I was visiting a particular classroom. And then in another building, it didn't get made clear to everybody. So I definitely got a couple of like people can get me like, hmm, why is she in our building? And it also caused some anxiety because then it, it created a conversation between the building administrator and the teacher around why that teacher had invited me into the building. So I don't know how to, how to bridge those two things. I don't know how to make it so that if, if people want to have conversations, but they don't want to necessarily have to announce it to the, the folks who have a lot of power over their, their positions, that, that we can do that. And so I don't have an answer here. I'm just raising these concerns. Because to me it was clear that I go in, I'm very forthright and very transparent about being there. And I don't even remotely want to suggest that, you know, we sneak in the back door and whatnot. But if it's a, if it's a question of, of creating stress for staff to invite us, I'm not sure how to, how to fold that into this. And I just wanted to make that, 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 I just wanted to say that out loud so that that other side of it, you know, for some people it's stressful to see us and for some people it's stressful to have to share with their boss that they have invited us into their building. And I, and I don't know what the cost benefit analysis of those two competing feelings are.
Yeah, and perhaps the stumbling block in this is that they should, all the requests should be first made to the superintendent to seek information. Again, you know, that might be the thing with courtesy that you would let them know that, that may feel to people like it is a prohibition when you're wishing to learn more about a specific topic, issue or program. You might, you know, say something that could be informed, the superintendent should be informed. If you're looking for specific information or topics, because the superintendent might have more information to give you as opposed to making it seem like there's a prohibition. As someone who's administered a program in 4J for 30 years, I love this section. It's very clear that as programs personnel, I can go to school board members and talk to them. That school board members, when they're new or what information can come to me and ask for it, that the whole board can be invited. You know, I always tried to make sure it was correct and that the superintendent, no, that's just a courtesy and invited too. We want everyone to come and see us. We love us. And so as Maya might be saying, you know, there's a little bit of staff protection there in that, you know, what, what you're, what you're kind of your goal here. So perhaps maybe that sentence about these requests should first be made to the superintendent. We've already modified number two above, you know, we've already modified that. So maybe that might be the stumbling block here as opposed to the access by either staff or by school board members or the whole board. Sorry, I'm hoping that kind of says something.
And I, I just want to jump back in before I lose my train of thought because you sparked a part that I forgot, which I think there's a distinction here between, for me, and I, again, I'm only speaking for me, but a distinction between a visit when a school board member has initiated that, that, that request for the visit versus when a, when a staff member has, has been the one to initiate that. And, and, and I think that, that, that's, that's where the, where the line is, is for me. I, I feel as though I might be comfort, more comfortable if this was limited to the first part where it's school board initiated requests to come in versus somebody saying, let's grab some chai latte from the South Eugene High School like their little coffee shop and have a conversation and not have it, have to turn into something where then my building administrator is wondering. And I, and I don't mean to use that as the example. It's just the only one that came into my head because they have great chai latte. But, but just, I, I don't want to make it so people can't ask for a visit or, or that we have to suddenly start feeling like we need to be sneaky and can't meet teachers in their classrooms and what they want to show is something that they want to show us that has to do with their classroom. And, and so I, I would be, I, I would be really comfortable leaving that first part and maybe even just pulling the second part where it's about the program staff proactively inviting board members.
But think about it this way, if you just took out the first two lines where it just says, you know, and go back to that thing where board members, you know, may, you know, the request to the school, this, this says, if a site or program visit is requested, that seems to me like it's onsite on 4J property. Whereas if I'm going to have a cup of coffee with someone, that doesn't seem to fall in the purview of a site.
Well, that's why I referenced the, you know, I don't even know if any other high schools have one of those little ax presses, whatever they call it. But that, that part, that's other, that second part that starts at further from time to time, building administrators or program staff may proactively invite board members. I, I feel like that's where we need to, to, to maybe honor the, the protection of those folk, protecting those folks who are asking for those meetings. Sometimes they're casual and sometimes they're not so casual. And it, they should be able to ask to speak with us without having to necessarily expose themselves as having made that request.
May, maybe we could kind of a little bit go back to that thought that was in, I think that we thought about adding in number two, if this rises to the level of, you know, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to throw that in for consistency, that if we say the same words consistently, then we'll be able to use in my, I haven't, you know, Martina's writing wonderfully, but I'm thinking about that, using that if this rose to the level of an official visitor, whatever the word is, I can't think of it right now. Cause I'm trying to also concentrate on you all. Gordon.
I, I really agree with what Maya just said about there being a difference between us, you know, calling up and wanting to see something, which I would be comfortable with the process outlined here. And people asking us to, whether it's to come see something in their class, or I've been asked, oh, can you, you know, we want to talk about blah, blah, blah. Can you meet us in the cafeteria after school? And, you know, we've spent a fair amount of time in this meeting, talking about the importance of being sensitive to the potentially chilling effect that we have as board members when we meet with people because they get intimidated. But the same thing is true of superintendents and principals. This is not particular to 4J. It's not particular to schools, like in every workplace in the world. Like most people are to some degree worried or afraid of their bosses. And so, you know, when we talked about, I know when we talked about this two years ago, and I was talking about meeting people at schools who after, after school hours to talk about something. And I said, well, we want you to, to inform the principals so that they, as a courtesy. And I said, I'm fine doing that as long as there will be like a public, a public statement from the administration that no staff will be interrogated after the fact, but oh, I saw you meeting with Maya or Basta, what was that about? Because then, you know, I could say for myself, as a, as an employee of the University of Oregon, if I thought whenever I talked to a trustee, which is never, but if, that if I talked to somebody, that then everything would be interrogated, I would never say anything that I thought the person above me wouldn't want me to say. It's a, it's a totally chilling effect. So for that not to happen, I think that we need to leave open this, this door to things that are initiated by staff for us to learn from. And so that, that's where I would draw the line.
Thank you, Gord. Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying to think of what everyone you guys are saying, because it, it takes me just a moment to process that. Yeah, that chilling effect is important. And so, and so is the other side too. It's a, it's a hard, hard coin. Judy.
So I'm, I'm really glad we separated the two because I do think they're very different. And I, I did think they were getting mixed up. So I definitely support that. So, and so really the conversation is about when we're invited in more than other ways. And I know in some ways, because it does reference Oregon Public Meeting Laws. And I think the re, you know, we have been invited as a board to come and see a curriculum or come and see something, you know, that, that some class is doing a final project. And so I think sometimes, you know, just being careful about not having a quorum there is something we've been, so, so that's to be, those are some of the examples. I think many of us wanted to go to some things. But to the point about Gordon, I, yeah, I don't know how to balance the fact that a principal is sort of in charge of, you know, we've signed in and out of schools. People have to be there for a reason. So you're aware of who's in the school for safety reasons, for obvious reasons. And so I guess I would just say, could, you know, if someone really had a private conversation that they felt uncomfortable, I think in some ways it would be better to do it off school property. Because then there isn't that, that, you know, that it just would be important to maybe have that privacy, but still, still honor the fact that the principal is responsible for the entire school. I also worry if, if board members come in and have private conversations with some staff, other staff might wonder, just seeing you have the conversation, why they are included. So it, I just think if you, it might be cleaner to have those kinds of things outside of a school building.
Before we move on, we might think about making this section two parts. You know, the part where boards are invited in or board members are invited in and how that's handled. And then, you know, as a, as opposed to a meeting, you know, a site visit. I don't know. I'm just trying to think of that where people approach you all for a meeting versus you all approaching a school, a site or a program. If, if this were two different sections, it might be cleaner where if you've been invited in, you should, you know, let the building official know. You might should let the superintendent know that's a courtesy thing. And then go do your business as an invited member of the school board. And then have a separate section that says, you know, when asked to meet by individuals or teachers, you know, how you're going to handle that. And I would have to think of those words too. But perhaps if this were broken into two sections, it would be easier to, it wouldn't be as confusing. Alicia, then Laurel, then Gordon, please.
Hey, thanks. And I apologize. I don't have it right in front of me. I don't have my book. But I think we have a policy which is different than working agreements. We have a policy about board members going to, to schools and what our responsibility is. And I'm pretty sure it says we're supposed to alert the powers that be, which anyhow. So if we don't put it in the working agreements, it's fine. It's in policy. You still have to do it. But sometimes the working agreement is just a easier way to read it. It's like a, you know, tutorial versus the owner's manual. I don't even know if that's a good example, but anyhow.
A great example.
But, you know, you could be making this up too. I, I don't know, because I don't have my policy in front of me and I can't recite like some of you policy people, chapter and verse. I, you know, I appreciate what you said, Gordon, that sometimes people just want to have those conversations. And, you know, sometimes we, we need to do that. That is a part of being a leader. And then how do we, what do we do with those? And how do we move them forward so they don't just end up with us? I know that, that that does happen. So I appreciate it. Just don't want us to get all wrapped up in whether we're going to, you know, tell people we're in the school or not. If really it's something we have to change in policy. Thanks.
Thank you, Alicia. You know, thinking about even meeting downtown, I appreciate what Judy said, but I think Martina and I met for coffee right after she was elected and to talk about the natives program and off by walks the super, a principal. And I had the opportunity to introduce her and it was not at all awkward because I, I was there for, you know, like a purpose. Had I been there for something, you know, more, you know, not quite so open. And it would have been awkward. I hear what Gordon's saying, you know, it might have been very, very disconcerning. Yeah. Did I say Laurel and then Gordon, I think?
Um, so I, I, like I said in the beginning, and this is, this, as written, looks like gatekeeping. I appreciate what you said, Judy, that we're going to look at it and need to make some changes. I, and if there is a policy, it probably should just state there's a bold policy that says this. And that's simple science, simple, because I do remember looking that up, Alicia. So thank you. Um, so, and I just, when I look at these things written like tiny novels, it's like, what, what is the use? It's just, it's not helpful. And actually this one was confusing. You know, we're saying, mentioned several times when people are new to the board. It was very confusing to us. As I remember Maya and I discussing this early on going, what is, what the heck? I can't do all this all the time. I'm, I would be constantly calling Sydney every, every day. So it's, it just doesn't, it's not helpful. So let's just follow the policy. And I know the policy says to inform, but I don't think it's white all this as far as I remember. And so, and then we move on. Thanks.
Thank you. Sydney said that there is a policy. And so perhaps it could be just referenced in your, I'm sorry, superintendent. Andrew Carr has said there's a policy and it could be referenced in your working agreement. And, you know, it's, it's not, as, as Alicia says, it's not bad to have a reminder.
Brenda, do you mind if I read it? Because I don't, I'm not a policy reading person. I kind of feel special. I know you guys are all like, Alicia's going to read a policy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would love, I would love that.
Are you guys okay with that, Gordon? I stepped in front of you. Okay, thanks. Board policy BG slash GBD, board staff communication. How am I doing? All right. Let me see if I can actually get this where I can read it. All right, let me see if I can actually get this where I can read it. Visit by board members will be carried out under supervision authority and with the full knowledge of staff principals and other supervisors. School visits by board members will be regarded as informal expressions of interest in school affairs. And not as inspections or visit for supervisory or administrative purposes, end of my interpretive reading, thanks.
Yeah, pretty, pretty clear, pretty clear, thank you very much for doing that. Gordon, please.
Uh, I guess that, I know that we talked about this two years ago or three years ago, whenever, in twenty nineteen. Um, and I'd have to look at the, at the policy again, because I don't remember thinking it applied to this kind of thing. But I'll just say, first, I, I think that your, um, suggestion Brenda of separating the two things, meaning. Or member initiated versus board member invited, um, makes sense regardless of where we end up on the two things, I would support that. I think, uh, you know, the, the central problem we have is not too much. Board communication with people in the schools, it's too little, certain, I'll just say for myself, it's certainly too little. And getting not enough information by far from the people who are in the schools day to day and can tell us like what's happening on the ground level. And, um, I have ever since, I mean, I've said this many times, but it's still true. Ever since announcing to run, I have heard so many things that are important and that end with, don't tell anybody you heard this from me. And to not cut off that communication is critical, but I'm not gonna, I'm not anybody's steward, I'm not gonna solve the problem. But in terms of policy and budget, we need to know those things. And, uh, I understand the suggestion of meeting offsite, which I know we talked about this a couple of years ago too. Um, but I also have been in situations where it's saying, yeah, a few of us will get together after whatever, after the school day in the cafeteria. And the difference, and if you meet right after the school day in the cafeteria, five people will be there and you say, well, let's go to this coffee shop that's five minutes away. You know, one or two people will be there, because once people get in their cars, then they go home and the thing is not the same. And I don't want to, um, uh, I don't want to limit this because of that. And I, I'll say again, last time in twenty nineteen, I said, fine, I'm fine with, you know, if I have a meeting after school hours in the cafeteria. I'm fine with, you know, informing everybody as long as there is a clear publicly stated policy that nobody will be interrogated about that. And last time at least, there was not a willingness to do that. And that says to me then, okay, you're gonna go meet with people and then they're gonna be asked, what'd you talk about with Leifer? And that's, that to me defeats the whole purpose of it. So I would want to, I want to be really careful to protect that. So I, I'll look at the policy, but certainly in terms of working agreement, I wouldn't support anything that, um, that limits our ability to have those kind of conversations.
Yeah, so I don't know, maybe Martina, if you have to think on, think on that one, when you and Judy come back and perhaps separating it as into two. Um, I, you know, I, I hear Gordon, um, I hear you very deeply about, you know, fearing retaliation as an employee. I've, I've been in those very shoes where I was afraid to say something out loud, um, but now I'm retiring, so I'm not quite so fearful. And, you know, that, I don't know how, I don't know if there's a way to put that protection in a working agreement. Because, you know, this agreement is between all of you all. And, um, you know, it kind of comes down to, uh, you know, how much do we, you know, do we trust ourselves? And how much do we trust each other to, to do the right thing? And that's difficult sometimes, because interpretation of the right or good thing is, you know, different with different people. But the fact that you're talking about this and getting out in the open, what, you know, and coming to some agreement on what you think these sections mean. Even if they aren't perfectly crafted in terms of words, hopefully you're building that trust level, you know, between you all. That you have this commonality of what you mean and, and that you're, you know. You're finding ways to protect teachers and people that talk to you and those kinds of things that happen in our district every day. It's, it's important, Maya.
Um, I don't know if we are supposed to go until nine thirty. Um, and I don't know how much more we have ahead of us.
We have two.
And I don't know if I just turn my screen off, but I would love like a five minute break, uh, if possible. I know my brain is kind of going nuts, but if we only have two left, I think I can handle that. I just, um, I know we've been at this for three hours and we've, we've dived deep and I've had a lot of tea. And I will let you finish the rest of that thought, because I know you know what I'm saying.
Sure, um, so do we need to take this little D wiggle, uh, kind of break and come right back in five minutes? Let our brains spin a little and we'll work on the last ones and think about.
Oh, so are we going past our scheduled time?
That's what I was, we're, oh, we were scheduled eight thirty, but, well, I think we have two left.
Two left.
Never mind, I thought we were scheduled till nine thirty, sorry.
No, we were scheduled to eight thirty, but.
I'm available for you all.
You can ignore me then, I can, I can, I can handle it.
Us two are pretty uncontroversial too.
Should we trek on then? Yeah, so obviously, um, number nine is gonna need some, some thought and tinkering. That will come back a, as a final, um, draft and maybe a proposed draft for people to look at before it gets to the final draft. But I like the idea of everything that's in there, that's, that's really good, everyone. So number ten, with the popularity and availability of photography for social media purposes. Photos of students in which students can easily be identified should not be posted without prior and explicit consent. Of the parent or guardian of the student. Anyone have any problems with that one? Just pure protection of, of kids that we shouldn't be using our phones in the schools and doing essays with the kid. Unless the parent says it's okay and posting that, yeah, perfect, thank you. Number eleven, if a board member is experiencing threats, bullying or insults. They should alert board, board leadership as soon as they are comfortable doing so. If the behavior is being delivered via board email or during a board meeting. Then board leadership will respond on behalf of the entire board to ensure the personal safety of board members. And that the interactions with the public are respectful and constructive. If board members are receiving threats, insults or bullying. That affect their feelings of safety and ability to perform their duties or that may affect other board members. They are encouraged to alert board leadership as soon as possible. Leadership and the board member will decide on appropriate action. Thoughts, concerns, comments, um. I'm sorry, Laurel, I was just thinking of this too, Laurel, then Gordon, then Judy.
Um, I think there should be, if, if it is informed that there is. Any of this happening, and I think this is, the way it was brought up was for a certain behavior. But I think it can go for discrimination and behavior that is coming, um, towards people that are on the board. Um, then there should be a response, because sometimes you tell things to leadership and you get nothing back. So, or there should be another way to talk about this, um, there should be some vehicle to get the information. Um. Be, besides taking it to someone and not, not having a response, because that is, um, damaging.
I, I, I like your, I like Laurel when you said some vehicle that, you know, we have to think about that for a minute. But, um. You know, s- some way to actually resolve it, I, I just think that was a huge, a huge say. Uh, um, you know, we did have conversation in, uh, Robert's Rules of Order about. You know, being very strong with the way people talk to you all as board members. And also I think it was Alicia who, um, or maybe it was Mary who reminded us of the boards. Of the school districts policies around, um, various groups. And how we view those and welcome them in our school. And sometimes we're taken aback when people say things, we don't really quite remember that there's a policy there that we can support that. And so that's really, that is hard and it becomes a, a, you know, a situation where people can have, have really hard things said against them. Or say hard things back, you know, things pop out of my mouth all the time. And, um, so obviously there's some thought there with what you're saying on how to. Not just say this and acknowledge it, but really fix it, so I'm thinking on that Laurel, I'm thinking on it. Um, yeah, Gordon, please.
Uh, I just, you know, just, just a minute ago, I said, oh, I think this is all uncontroversial, because I remember that we came up with this policy. Because of threats from outside in the community that some members of the board had been subject to. And we didn't want to leave each individual person to have to, we kind of wanted to have each other's back and not leave each individual's person. But if, if this is now applying also to relationships among ourselves or within the district, then I think it's more complicated and we'll warrant more.
Yeah, it does. Excuse me, I'm sorry, so I need to ask you all. Is there already, is there already an adopted policy? Um, in place, I mean, you just said that we adopted a policy, is there already a type of policy in place about? Um, um, you know, attendees at meetings, uh, talking to or speaking to members, is there already that policy in place? I don't know, maybe superintendent knows or Judy would know, or you, when you, when you expressed a policy that's been adopted.
Look, I'm looking, I don't.
Who was it that said that?
Thank you, thank you, Sydney.
Gordon, I do appreciate you giving the context of what, why it was there, because that's exactly right.
Um. Perhaps if you think about this, this is a good section, you know, not only for, um, people that would speak. At meetings or by email, but speaking, you know, to one another or something, perhaps this is a good section. But if people are feeling like it's unresolved, the issue might not be. The issue might not be bringing the information forward. The real issue here might not be bringing information forward. The real issue may be here in terms of resolution of an issue. And how that is or is not resolved satisfactorily. You know, it might go back to that, that feeling of, of, um, you know, not being responded to, therefore I'm not being heard. So. Perhaps the concepts of this working agreement of bringing your positions forward. Whether other people, you, you know, we can't tell people how they feel or how they think. If you have that feeling, you have the right and the opportunity and, and you should have the responsibility of bringing it forward. So that people can be, other people can be aware of it and feel safe and protected, just like anyone else in our school district and heard. And, um. I'm trying to think if there would be some way where it says leadership and the board member will decide on appropriate action. And implement, you know, not just decide on an action, but perhaps implement something. It's, it's a hard. It's a hard thing to get past hurtful situations, no matter when they happen. Yeah, Martina.
Oh, I did it, now I did it, I was the one who did it.
That's your one, that's your one today.
You'll have to do it, no, I was just raising my hand, because I thought that perhaps, um, Sid had a response, because she's still unmuted. And was being too polite to raise her hand, but no.
No, I'm still looking for any, I don't think there is a policy, there's a policy that covers employees.
Right, yeah, and students, we have a policy for employee and students, you know, I'm trying to think, should we, you know, shouldn't that be extended to you all by your own? Um, you know, by your own working agreements, that, that we have the obligation, um, you know, to, to treat each other the same way. That we have to treat t- teachers or staff or, um, you know, students or, um, coaches or whatever.
Yeah, I'm looking, I don't, I don't see anything, so I don't think there's a policy that covers it, so we might need to work on that.
Well, thank you for your looking.
Thanks for checking in, Martina.
Perhaps then it sounds to me like, like maybe we're at a moment where some more, some more research or some more information could be brought. And added to this before we feel satisfied about it. Um, one, one option might be trying to, to look at what the other policies and practices are. Um, around, you know, uh, overall behavior, right? Like, uh, we had to make some decisions when, uh, rules about masking, um, came down and what that meant for, for people's public participation in board meetings. Right, so maybe we can look at some of those, um, and, and check in around that. I think this may be something where we want to ask council, um, to make sure that we're staying in bounds. Um, so maybe this one could be unfinished and brought back.
Yeah, maybe this might be a part of one of your goals, um, you know, to, to resolve this in a, this is important. You know, and to resolve it in a, a good and healthy and, um. Beneficial for all kind of way, you know, we're always going to agree and disagree. Uh, so that's, that's just given, that's just given the nature of things and, and I. I just don't think there's a good answer right now, Gordon? And then Judy.
Um, I'm very happy to send this back to revisions and be done soon. Um, I just wanted to, to flag, and I don't know if this is for working agreements, it may be for someplace else. But we have had times when, when members of the board received threats that were, that is not about internal things. And it was a question of, so does each individual member have to decide if they're calling the police and making their own plan? And I've, I think that that's something where we, it would be good to have a more, um, a better developed, uh, robust and clear. Plan for what happens, how does, how does the district act when that happens? And that's probably something that, obviously something that goes beyond the board, so maybe it's not a working agreement thing, but I think it is something that would be good to flesh out.
That's, you know, that's a really good comment, um, you always think you're, you know, that things are gonna go okay, but boy. Some of those things that you've seen. Judy.
Um, I really agree with taking this out at this time, but committing to do the policy research. And, um, I think we've also committed to do some work on, on how this affects us internally. This kind of, these kind of, what, however, whatever the definitions are. And I think it was new this year and the intent was exactly what was stated. So it's not like we're taking something out that has ever been here before. And I think what we've learned as, as the public discourse has gotten different and the board dynamics. We need a lot more work in this area that we can't just solve this tonight within a paragraph.
Right.
I would really support it, but put it over into this other work and so I agree with that.
Yeah, a lot of that, you know, some of the things that happen, you just can't, you can't pre-plan, you can't pre-plan for them. And so your reactionary and that reactionary should drop back to, you know, some working trust between the board. Based on all the good conversation you've had tonight, and it should also, you know, drop back to that, uh, sense of, uh, common decency. And, um. You know, that, that, um, you know, disagreement can happen in a really healthy way. And then as a board be unified, as when Gordon says, when it comes from external things, uh, you know, it, it shouldn't be tolerated. I, I always love the way Joe says, please don't talk to me like that. I just think that's so profound, when he, when he says that, it's so disarming. And when I'm, when I'm getting agitated or frustrated, he'll say, please don't talk to me like that, and it's just very disarming. And it gives you a pause and that's just part of, I think, good communication. And, and what, telling people what you expect, I come from a family of, you know, people that yell loudly. And so our communication is really a style and some people come from different background communications. And when you self, tell someone, please don't, uh, speak to me like that, you're letting them know that that style of communication isn't comfortable to you. And that's a really, um, you know, good way to do it, because everybody, you know, especially with new people coming on. You have your own, you know, your own styles and things, and it's a good way to learn about, about each other and have these good, healthy conversations. I would just really follow up with what Judy says, is that you make a commitment to resolve this. So that people on the board don't feel like that there is no resolution or they don't have a vehicle or that avenue. people on the board don't feel like that there is no resolution or they don't have that vehicle or that avenue to not only be heard, but to have resolution. And caveat of that is sometimes resolution isn't, doesn't really always go our own way. But it's resolved for the best decision to protect everybody and make everybody kind of on a equitable footing kind of thing. So any other comments that you all have for each other? Yes, Martina.
I just want to sum up the items that I have on my list that June I will be taking back to workshop a little bit more. So right now the items that I have listed are three, four, five, eight and nine. I took lots of notes on what folks are saying. So hopefully we can come back with a draft that is, gets us, you know, that much closer. And then we'll take out 11 because it needs that additional amount of work with the, with the guarantee that it's something that we intend to bring back when, when it's ready. Did I miss any that anyone had written down?
That was, yeah, it's Judy and then Maya and then Laura.
We just had one, but I think really what you're saying is that we will do a draft from what we heard today. So that whole section. Yeah.
Perfect. Maya, please.
Is this document being worked on as we speak or, cause I'm looking back at five and it already looks different. And I just want to know if I'm remembering it differently or if.
It's not aware of this as a live document.
Okay.
Are you on Board Book? Where, where are you looking at it on?
I'm looking at it. No, I guess I'm not in like the Google. I don't know. I thought that that was longer about the concerns about the agenda items and the.
No, it was only one sentence.
Awesome. Thank you.
It was longer in the other section, Martina. My, Maya, that's probably what you're thinking.
Thank you, Judy. That makes me feel a lot better about following along.
Thank you. Laurel, please.
Yes, I am glad you're here Brenda, because I have been reading up on my Robert's Rules. Still be proud to know. And, but I also noticed that we are, we kind of follow as we choose. And I would, I would like to add to board agreements, even though it's in our bylaws and policies. But something to say to, that we will give a copy of Robert's Rules for small, what is it? Small boards or small groups to board members. And also we will work to follow those procedures because what's beautiful about Robert's Rules, which I've just learned because they were frustrating me until I read more, is that they allow everyone to have voice. And so we're missing some of that because we're not actually following all the parts of how the rules work. And so I'd be excited for all of us to follow those procedures correctly because to make sure everybody has voice. And I have more to say on that, but I also have to go potty. So.
You know, and that might be, I don't, I know, I don't know about like Sid, maybe when you do the new board packets, those kinds of things could be, you know, included. I've really appreciated using Robert's Rules of Order. You know, to help me along and there's so much you just really can't know them all. People go to school for four years to learn that stuff. But it is, it is a good guide for us. Yeah.
So I, I don't know if we can add it to our agreement that would, you know, that, that will be part of, you will get this and I don't, but I think it'd be great to have that instead of, it should be written somewhere else.
They're in our binders on our, our desk. And I know that because when I was chair, I wanted to put the binder together. So and I think Lisa's working on something I, I know where, because those of you that do things virtually and don't want a binder.
Yeah.
For small meetings.
I think they're Robert's Rules. I don't have my binder. This is what happens when they, you can't get in and that's why we have to have it virtually. So I apologize. I don't know.
Now, I'm like, I'm like you, Alicia. I'm a paper and pen girl.
But also we should own it. We only see binders when we're at that meeting.
So Laurel, I just want to say, we did as a group do a training on Robert's Rules. We agreed to follow them. So I, if, when Martina and I look at this draft or there's a place, because our working agreement is to follow Robert's Rules. We could put that in. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly where it will fit and then make sure with the new board members and people get copies of Robert's Rules.
Um, yes. And yeah, we have an agreement that we're following it, but we're not. And there are some things that were voted on that weren't voted on correctly because we're not following it. So I just want to make sure we're all on board. We've had a training, but there's, it was, and I appreciate it. That's why I started my interests. But also I've, I've bought more books and I've learning more and I want, I really want it to be something that we're using correctly because we're not at this right now.
There might be some places to put that in under either meeting agreements or duties and responsibilities of leadership, because leadership, you know, implements or makes the decisions as, as, as the chair, whomever that mayor may not, excuse me, be at that time. And you know, as board, I would go back to the Robert's Rules of Order con, uh, training that we had, if at some time you think that, you know, Robert's Rules of Order are not being correctly utilized. It is at that time to make, you know, a point of order. So that you could possibly say, I think we should be doing it this way. Is that what Robert's Rules of Order says? And, and you usually, unless it's something egregious, you usually cannot go back and unring the bell. You can re-ring it in that you can bring a topic back and put it on the agenda and deal with it. If something was a miss or re-miss. But if something has been done either before the training or at the training that was done, you know, in good faith, in the board acting appropriately, it can't, can't be brought back unless it's put back on the agenda and a brand new bell ringing. And wait a minute, Alicia and then Judy and Judy, you'll need to turn your mic on in just a minute.
Hey, thanks. Actually, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what you said, Brenda, which if we do put something in the group agreements, I think we should definitely write something about kind of, we're all in this together. And if, you know, we should make sure we keep space for corrections as we go through the meeting. And if Laurel has extra books, then I, I want her, I want to copy her homework. I don't want to do it. I just want to copy your homework. So if there are different books or different pamphlets that you find that would be helpful, I think it's, it's an ongoing process to learn them. So thanks.
Thanks. Yeah. And those, those conversations around how Robert's Rules of Order are done should be really, you know, helpful as opposed to accusatory. Everybody's, everybody's trying their hardest. Judy, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
I was just going to say, I think we're at, it's eight fifty. I know several people have said they need a break. We're 20 minutes over. So do you feel this is a good stopping point, Brenda?
I do. I feel that we've done a lot of things. I want y'all to know how much I've appreciated the opportunity to work with you. It's been, you know, 30 years of a joy and this is a great way to, you know, go on. Hopefully I'll still be around. And if I can help again, you know, please reach out. I would appreciate it if you would reach out as a group as opposed to individuals emailing me and saying, you know, what, what did you say or what should I do? I'd like those to come, you know, from a good place. So I'm not seen as being supportive of any one issue or person over another.
Thank you so much. And you know, we really appreciate your help with this. You were, you got us through. I think we might've gotten to the end, at least to get almost final draft. So
Perfect.
And I wanted, again, appreciate my fellow board members for sharing openly about these. And it's really an opportunity to help us all understand what these words mean, since we're agreeing to, to live them. And again, thank you for hanging in there to get through it. And everyone have a good night. I will officially adjourn this work session.